Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Looks like we've got a big crowd out there tonight. It's September the 5th, 2017, here at 6 o'clock. We're at City Hall 116, West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Council Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Mary Corpus with the Granbury Church of Nazarene to lead us in an invitation, and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by Mayor Pro Tim "Mickey" Parsons. All stand, please.
Good afternoon. Let's pray. Precious Father, who is in heaven, we ask you blessing on the people that you have been calling to lead the community in which we live and work. Father, we ask that you help and direct and guide us to the leaders. Father, we ask to you that you give courage to make a change where the changes is needed. Remind them that all authorities ordained by you, and that they are not only leaders, but also servants. Remind them their order, their responsibility, including the least of these among us, for children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, the strangers, the immigrants in our community, all those who live on the margins, those who are alone, those who are forgotten. Grant us to the wisdom and encourage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May we all speak when it's time to speak, and listen when it's time to listen. May we be always guided by the Holy Spirit of God. This we pray in the mighty name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of the flag of the United States of America.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the state flag of Texas.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the unity of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we have a couple of proclamations to present. I'll go down to the podium there and present those. Our first one's with the, uh, Michael. Our first one's with the Wet Veterans, and I think we have a group of folks with them. So if everybody would come up and stand up here. The official proclamation is "Whereas Wet Veterans is a nonprofit faith and family-based organization dedicated to assist veterans, veteran spouses, veteran widows, and veteran's children. And whereas Wet Veterans was established in 2012 to help veterans and their families free of charge. And whereas the Wet Veterans helps with alcohol and drug addictions, post-traumatic brain disorder, traumatic brain injury, military sexual trauma, and re-acclimating back into the civilian life. And whereas Wet Veterans at the Acton United Methodist Church have partnered to present the community a Soul Repair Day with the topic Moral Injury, dedicate to all veterans, active military members, all first responders and their family, as well as children, teens to young adults because of the moral injury they endure through bullying and abuse." Now therefore, I, Ninhuul, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do hereby endorse the efforts of the Wet Veterans Organization and the Acton United Methodist Church by proclaiming September 30th, 2017, as the Soul Repair Day. And in Granbury, the Soul Repair Day event will be held at Acton United Methodist Church, 3433 Fall Creek Highway, Granbury, Texas, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., featuring the keynote speaker Reverend Dr. Zachary Moon. Furthermore, I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing and honoring all veterans, active military, and first responders.
Thank you all.
Our next proclamation, I think we have a representative, Vicki Breeder, is on Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. The official proclamation reads, "Whereas the month of September is a national recognized sponsored by the American Cancer Society and related organizations such as Alliance for Children's Cancer, and the countless chapters in Texas and across the country fighting to find a cure for a variety of cancers that strike our youngest citizens, some of which have a zero percent of surveillance rate. And whereas cancer doesn't fight fair at any age, but perhaps no cancer is more emotionally devastating than those that occur in children. The fear and uncertainty that these young patients and their families face can hardly be measured, but the family of the stricken children are deeply committed to finding new answers that will benefit every child with cancer. And whereas it is important upon us to make the public aware of important issues affecting our community, September affords the opportunity to raise awareness and educate both the young and the old about the ongoing battles and the resilience of the cancer's youngest victims and their family. Now therefore, I, Ninhuul, the mayor of the city of Granbury, Texas, do hereby recognize and proclaim September 2017 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And in Granbury, I will invite all residents to recognize the value of supporting the children and the families who need support in fighting childhood cancer of all types." At this time in the program, we're going to move into the citizen participation. I like to read the rules of the participation, so I want people to, uh, extremely important that we follow these rules, especially tonight where we have multiple people speaking. Make sure we try to keep it within the two-minute allotted time so that we can get through everybody that is going to speak. The city council provides an opportunity for the citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of the consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda during the citizen participation at the city council meeting per month, subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information: their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject matter to which they are presenting. Only one person may approach the microphone at the time, and only that person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Excuse me. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer other than the individual city council members or the staff. And the speakers may file copies of their remarks, of their supporting information, with the city secretary, who will make that information available to the city council and the city manager if requested. The council will be allowed to receive input or information for a future agenda item, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council shall allot a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizen participation during the designated council meeting. The important factor in there is that we make sure that this, the speakers are not talking directly about an agenda item. So you've all had a chance to look at the agenda items, I'm sure, on there, so that we make sure that doesn't happen. Our first speaker is Ms. Julia Pennell.
Thank you, mayor, city manager, and city council people. I'm here to talk about the evacuees that we have worked with this week. I think it's important that everyone here, ooh, what a full house, that everyone here, as long as the people as leaders understand what Granbury has done. So far, in the last 10 days, we have worked with over 102 evacuees. Right now, we still have 24. I've written it because, as you know, I can get emotional, so I wrote my story. Last Sunday, we were sitting, eating our chips and our feet up at home, watching a TV show, and I don't know where it came, but over my phone came, "Did you know there were 100 people in Granbury, many at La Quinta?" So I said, "Bobby, we need to go there." So I called La Quinta, and sure enough, there was a Casey and her family that were in the foyer. She was crying because she had not been approved by FEMA, and her family had, and she didn't have the money to stay here with her family. So Bobby came, and we went over there, but you know who was blessed? We were. And so she got to stay with her family, and that led to the next 10 days of being involved. We met the most incredible people and families. In came food, clothing, money, cards, but most of all, they left welcomed and loved here in Granbury. Dusty at Mission Granbury was in constant contact with me every day to make sure we always had what we needed. Many of these families would be coming for vacations, some want to move here. We laughed, prayed, and cried together. On Wednesday, we made sandwiches with volunteers and fed 30, and put up more, thanks to Walmart and volunteers. Thursday, thanks to Walmart, Chicken Express, Taco Casa, plus people who just showed up with burgers, dogs, and chili, we fed 82 for lunch and 76 for dinner. We had so much food that a volunteer took enough for several meals to eat and carry home for abused families. We didn't want any food to go to waste. Friday, we served pizza to all the families that came, the hard-working staff, and took the leftovers to our first responders in town, and one volunteer took some to another hotel, again, not wanting to waste. They came from La Quinta, Best Western, Quality Inn, and Holiday Inn. We also helped a family of six that came to a family of four here in Granbury. Those four could barely feed themselves. So we agreed they would house them, and we would feed them and clothe them and give them items they needed. Every family going home, most went last Friday and Saturday from that first bunch, left with a bag of food, case of water, and cash that people gave, and cards for gas. Nick Espinoza and his family left with a van full of supplies for some of the members of his little church back close to Victoria. He could get home and had found out some had nothing. Evacuees helping evacuees, that's a story. On top of all of this, when clothes overflowed, for two days, Jan Caldwell helped, and many others, haul overflow to Stonewater, who was taking trucks down daily. Donna Adair, a new friend and volunteer, hooked up with Mary Flores. They hooked up with evacuees from Quality Inn. And Scott and his mom, Mary and her husband, Donna, took down three carloads to a little town called Tivoli, who had nothing to begin with and had less when this was over. We took food, bug spray, we put out the word, and in came water. Amanda from the hospital showed up, and her husband, who works at Walmart, found out we need first aid kits, so here, oh, I'm over time. Can I continue?
Keep going.
Do y'all mind if I continue?
Real quick.
So early one morning, Donna and Robert, Mary and TCO, left to go to Tivoli. Go to Facebook and see Mary Flores' story. Back at the inn, we had a diva fashion show one evening at Persis. Called in 12 ladies, Mel Burge bought over designer purses, they picked shoes and purses, they picked, and when Mel had left, we had a fashion show. What fun that was. We sang together, worshiped together, ate together, and then one day, I looked around, and several of the ladies were with me in that room, helping us put things in order, which we did all day long. All the volunteers and others put out on Facebook. Many of our friends came by with gift cards for local restaurants. Our volunteer group alone bought and gave out over 60 cards. I know the hotels gave out several cards. Other friends came by and paid for rooms. We connected Annie and her family with a local relative. They're now looking for a house to rent for the next nine months here in Granbury. One of the most moving moments was when Robert came over from another hotel. We loaded him up with food. He had been approved by the National Guard to go back and help. He was worried about his family here. We said, "We will take care of them," and we did. Today, that family left when another family came, so for the last week, we made sure that Brandon's family was taken care of. Before he left, I asked him if we could pray together. We sat down in the foyer, looked up the TV, and he said, "Oh, Ms. Julia, that's my street." Then the tears poured down his eyes, and he pointed to the, I'm sorry, he pointed to the TV and said, "That's my house." I looked up, and all I could see was the chimney and part of the roof. We cried together, and then he said, "Praise God, I got my family to safety. We can rebuild a house." For the past 10 days, I have truly witnessed people in the valley thanking God as if they were on the mountains, being so grateful. There are still about 24 people here in Granbury, most at one hotel. Most are FEMA-approved, some are not. No more clothes, please. Most have food. I have my cards out there on the table out there, so if you want to call me and see what kind of donations you can help with, please do. But I leave everybody here tonight with many humbling things I have re-learned this past week. One of them is, speak out, but do it in truth and love. Speak out, but with kindness and respect. Most of all, make sure that what we say is necessary. And remember, I said this to several evacuees, and they said it back, and I've said it to other people. When all else fails, we will be remembered by our "however's." These wonderful people really show me what "however" really means. They will remember you and Granbury because of our "however's." Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mr. Dave Eagle.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you, city council. Appreciate the opportunity to come up here. I come up here in peace, and I also come up here just to point out, after we witnessed a nonpartisan flood down in Houston, and we got to see Texans on either side of the political spectrum helping each other and putting aside their political differences. We are getting ready to enter into a new election cycle, and I'm here just to ask for you guys to consider transparency. I know that one of the biggest earmarks of our government is we, the people, want to see a transparent and open government. So I'm asking, as we start our new season, I'm not getting on anybody, I'm not up here to raise any banner, I'm just asking for us to have a transparent government where we can ask for records, and we can ask for, to stand up in meetings and speak, and be allowed that opportunity. And I hope that as we enter the new season, this next election cycle, that we can enter that with fairness, openness, and a chance for all of us to have an opportunity to be heard, and also to get information that we asked for. So with that said, I will close.
Thank you.
Julie took the other tablet, so I'll let her. I'll sit down.
Good for the team. Our next speaker will be Jennifer Chandler. Jennifer? Not here. Our next speaker is Tyler Wood.
My name is Tyler Wood, and I live at 345 Lockwood Lane, Weatherford, Texas, 7687. And I am the person who this is about.
Ms. Wood, Ms. Wood, please present to the presiding officer. No, speak to...
I am the person who this article is about, real to real, and I am the person who this article is about, suitable conduct, and I've come today to tell my story. Since the day that Aaron proposed to me, the months of wedding planning served as an escape from the stressors of living with CVID. My first infusion was three months after I got engaged. I started gaining weight, became depressed, and honestly doubted whether I even deserved to marry a man. As perfect as Aaron. When I first met him, I was completely healthy, and we were just two high school teachers whose friendship evolved into love. And through it all, Aaron blessed me with unwavering support and never made me feel unworthy of him. Before the wedding, I was hospitalized twice due to complications with my infusions. Days would pass, and Aaron would distract me from IV sticks and breathing tubes with crude jokes and wedding details. Our greatest joy was the anticipation of becoming husband and wife, but 44 days before our wedding, it all came to a halt when we learned that our venue was triple-booked. Aaron and I regained some peace in a meeting with Chris Kaufman when we informed him that we decided to move our wedding to Warren's backyard. We wanted this day to be a private, intimate event for our families. We cried together and prayed for peace, and were promised that he would make things right. We had one month to completely transform our wedding from an elegant ballroom to being romantically rustic. Day by day, we watched as a new beautiful vision rose from the ashes. Our wedding was everything we hoped for and more, but it only took 48 hours of being newlyweds before reports of open records and slander plagued our honeymoon with tears of sorrow. When the article "Suitable Conduct" was published, Aaron and I felt so humiliated, we didn't understand how the same woman who could write such a supportive story about my battle with CVID could possibly etch her name beneath the title of this six-page gossip column. Unfortunately, it seems that these themes of heroism, perseverance, and love don't engage readers as much as revenge, and jealousy, and hate in this city. There is no doubt in my mind that this article was an attempt for political gain, and sadly used our wedding, an attempt to dissuade voters from supporting my mother, Rose Myers, in the upcoming election. How can someone be so angered about a situation that they are completely ignorant of and wonder why people view them as a troublemaker who's always at odds with their colleagues on council? My mother is an honest, hard-working, selfless woman, and I feel...
Ms. Woods, don't address people, just address me right here.
And I feel so sad for the person who has to target my marriage in order to hold together their cracking facade. Aaron and I are so incredibly blessed by all who are here tonight, our family, our friends, our colleagues, strangers, even my nurse. No words are sufficient enough to express how thankful Aaron and I are for all of your support, and it is because of all of you, Jonah and Steve Berry, that our wedding was a fairy tale. I can barely look at photographs of that day without even crying over how absolutely perfect it was. Aaron, I love you with all of my heart. You are my best friend, and I'm so lucky to be yours. Mom, I'm so proud of you for your loyalty to the truth, and finally, to my nieces and nephews who just walked in the door. Hunter Ashton, may this moment serve as a model to you to always stand up for what is right, to confront evil with grace, and that with family and love and God, you can overcome all things. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Stan Wazaleski. Almost got it right.
Who is it, mayor?
Well, oh, he spelled it out wrong. Wazaleski, okay.
You get closer every time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. My name is Stan Wazaleski. I live at 1 Lambert Court, Granbury, 76048. This will probably be the least amount of remarks that you will ever have heard me say, in light of what's been taking place that we've all heard. Since Ken and I came to Granbury in 2009, probably the most positive thing that's happened to the city of Granbury is Chris Kaufman being our city manager. Knowing that my remarks must be made to you, Mr. Mayor, Presiding Officer, I would really appreciate it if you would convey to the city council the political impact that's going to take place if something happens to Chris Kaufman. Thank you.
I have two speaker cards here that have addressed a public hearing for item number 14. Item 14 is not a public hearing, so if these two folks still want to speak as a public in the citizen participation, I will allow it, but not allow them to talk about item number 14, which is on the agenda, the first one being Cleo Brown. He did, he pointed out item 14, but item 14 is not a public hearing, but if you want to still speak on something other than item 14, okay.
Good evening. My name is Cleo Brown. I was operation manager of the GRCC for 2.4 years, beginning up until May 24th, 2017. There have been many false stories circulated that malign my character and work. I hope that those of you in this community that have worked with me will recall your experience with me and my billing practices with ethic and passion for your event and the improvement of the GRCC experience. Does this mean I can't go over some double bookings?
No.
I cannot?
No.
Okay. I guess I'll send in an editorial on those, because I did speak with Kathy Cruz, and unfortunately, she failed to print to any of my side of the story. I would just like to say, the story also, I had never worked with assistant city manager, but he told the newspaper that I speak to Rose hourly.
Ms. Brown?
Sorry. The reason why I called Rose the day that I decided to give my notice, or the day after, was that there, we had been having a conflict with a particular employee that was not pulling their weight. I was working physically, mentally, and emotionally, probably 14-hour days. My daughter was scheduled to have a C-section on Tuesday, the 23rd of May. I went, was planning on going to that, but didn't get off work till about 10:00 at night from doing the ceiling drain. The next morning, I had to go into work to do the, a sign, because the new hire did not understand how to do that. It was probably around lunchtime when I called my colleague, Kristy Kryling. I was on my way to pick up some lunch for my daughter and take it back to the hospital as she had already had her baby, which was a stressful situation in itself because I had to get her other children to school. We ran in, I ran in, I changed some wording on the sign, and by that evening, by the time I got out of the hospital at 6:00 p.m., I got a text from Chris saying that I could not terminate the particular employee that was causing so much strain. At that point, I ended up letting him know that I would resign in the morning after consulting my husband. The next morning, when I got to work, he sent me a text, not called me, after all the work that I had done there at the conference center, and I'm going to tell you, I've opened two hotels, and I have worked hard, but I've never worked as hard as I did at that conference center for the citizens of Granbury. I received a text, he said that he would take that as my two-week notice. When I called him to speak on the phone, and in the past, before this happened, Chris had always been extremely supportive. The time that I talked to him about six months before I ended up resigning, he told me, "Cleo, this community loves you," and I would ride that wave as long as I could. And we were speaking about a grievance against another employee there. I explained to Chris, "I know I'm a tough boss. I am..." I am in prayer about that and I am, that is something that the Lord is changing within my character and I do believe that I'd come a great deal of way. I work hard, I expect others to work hard, period. When I inherited the conference center, I was told people were sleeping on the job. It was a completely different conference center. Chris said to me, stick a fork in me, I'm done. Not once, not twice, but three times. Stick a fork in me, I'm done. Stick a fork in me, I'm done. He didn't want, I said, do you want to hear my side? No, stick a fork in me, I'm done. Because of that and because my heart was broken, because I'd never had conflict with him, never resisted his instruction.
Ms. Brown, you're addressing one of the staff people right now. Please don't do that.
Okay. I decided to call a person, a City Council member, who was not my friend. She was once a neighbor, so was Nan. They were equal in friendship. Tony Mobley, the last time we voted, I voted for you. Unfortunately, I'm sorry, Tony Allen, that won't happen again. Because I knew I could call Rose and Rose would listen.
Ms. Brown, time.
She would listen to what I had to say.
Six minutes, Mayor.
Ms. Brown.
She would listen to what I had to say. And I was broken because I, again, and there's not one of you in this community that have done events with me that I didn't comp a certain amount of ancillary, but I made, I never once waived any rental without my superior knowing. Not one, not even the one that he is the Vice President of that association and asked me to keep it under the table. I told Kristy Kryling about that. I told her that he asked me to keep it confidential and that she was going to be handling it, so it'd be between she and I. There is some items going on here and it needs to be addressed. And I will, I guess, return when the double bookings are not on the agenda to go over my side. Thank you.
I understand that Ms. Chandler is now here. Jennifer Chandler. Oh, Jennifer, making her way up here. Please, if you're, if you are a speaker, present your, present your statements to me, the Presiding Officer. Please don't bring up names of staff people or council people at any time. Might need to pull that mic down a little bit. There you go.
I'm short, sorry. My name is Jennifer Chandler. I reside at 1201 Eagle, um, sorry, I just moved. Black Hawk Drive in Hazlet, Texas. I am Rose Myers' oldest daughter. I come from a long line of strong women, my mother being one of the strongest. Her strength is something I admire, but it's something that is evidently intimidating to certain people. I could take my three minutes to lay out who my mother is not, but instead, I'll take my three minutes and tell you who she is. She's the mother to three children, all of us are here tonight, to five grandchildren. She's the wife to one wonderful man, who is also here tonight. And she's a friend to many. She is the woman that, after being elected previously, gave her time and money to shops on the square to do sales and foot traffic. She is the woman who showed up with pizza and water for first responders after the sinkhole incident. She is the woman who gave time and energy to Halo and Granbury for animals in need. She goes to your opera shows, she goes to dinners, balls, dedications, parades, and meetings like this one. My mother shows up for Granbury. After the way the Hood County paper, namely Kathy Cruz, has portrayed her, I think it's only fair that the citizens know the kind of person she truly is. She's not just a name that sells papers. She's my mom. She doesn't back down from a fight and she stares the bully in the eye. She's the example. This is my daughter Ashton. She loves her Nana. She's the example that I use when raising my children and she's the reason that I can stand in front of everyone here today, although terrified, angry, and hurt. In regards to the article in the paper covering my little sister's wedding, I think it was disgusting that anybody would use that severely mishandled event on the city's part to drum up political gains. But again, we do a great job of selling newspapers just living our daily lives. Every article written about my mom has the same con mentor, Mr. Mobley, a man who has never tried to know our family or know my mother. I know that when y'all ran against each other and she beat you, your pride must have been wounded. I just didn't realize how badly you would exact your revenge all the while asking for prayers. And to use my sister's wedding, that was the lowest move I've ever seen. It was enraging to myself and everyone who knows the heart of our family. I'll end this with two quotes that personify my mom and should leave a few people questioning. The first is, your true character is shown when nobody is looking. My mother's character is above reproach. And John 3:21, "But whoever practices the truth comes to the light, so that it may be clearly seen that his works have been carried out in God." The lights have been on this entire time. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, I'm going to caution the citizens' participation that any person making personal, impatience, profane, slanderous remarks and who becomes voices while addressing the City Council will be asked to be removed from the chambers. So be careful what we say. Make sure we talk in general. Our next speaker, and here again, she is, public hearing on item number fourteen is not a public hearing, so if the next speaker wishes to speak on anything other than item fourteen, she may, Fay Landem. Well, but this, this is for citizen participation or public hearing and that is not a public hearing.
My name is Fay Landem. I live at 707 North Avalon Court, Granbury, Texas. I would like to say what a shame and how sad I am that this mess regarding Rose Myers' daughter's wedding was plastered all over the front page of the Hood County News. Surely, this issue could have been discussed and settled in the Executive Council session if it needed to be discussed. I understand that Rose Myers may not be allowed to speak in her own defense tonight. This doesn't seem fair to me. As when the mayor was accused and chastised for granting Carla a raise, he was allowed to explain his side of the story to the council, to the public, and to the press. Why is the mayor and Rose not being treated the same? What was allowed for the mayor should be allowed for any council person. In any courtroom in America, the accused is allowed to speak. I'm sorry, for some reason, it is different at the Granbury City Council chambers. You are a council and a mayor that I have supported, appreciated, and many times defended for all the eight years that I have lived in Granbury and attended council meetings, but I fear you've let me down this time. Thank you for allowing me to speak and show my support for Rose Myers, a lady that supported me and my neighbors at Stonegate when we needed support against that three-story apartment building the rest of the council allowed to be built in my backyard. Thank you.
That concludes the citizens' participation. We will now move into the consent agenda, council. There's three items on the consent agenda. The first one being consider approving the City Council meeting minutes of August 15th, 2017, a regular meeting, and August 21st, 2017, a special meeting. The second one being consider approving amendment number two to the Charter 380 Economic Development Agreement execution on April 19th, 2011, between Weatherford College and the city of Granbury, which we do that every year. The third one is consider approving Freezing Nichols Change Order number two in the amount of $11,236 to amend the existing contract pricing for the Granbury Town Square paving improvement project to remove the three-inch lace bark elms and replace with four-inch lace bark elms. Council, at this time, I'd like to remove item number three. There are some other items on there that needs to be discussed, so I will go ahead and move that one to the deliberation agenda. Of the other two, are there any other items there that anybody would like to remove or to make some changes to? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve items number one and two on the consent agenda.
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. These items are approved. Moving into the deliberation agenda, we'll move item number three on the consent agenda to the first one. Also, I would like to take item number seventeen on our agenda here, which is consider approving Hyde Law Firm as the city attorney, and we will move it up below that one. It will be the second one. As you see, our attorney is sitting here beside me, so I think it's more fitting to go ahead and get that one taken care of also.
Mayor, if I need to do this in a form of a motion, I'll do it.
What's that, Ms. Allen?
Most of this crowd here is on number fourteen.
The what?
Most of the crowd here is here for fourteen. Can I make a motion to move it underneath item number, under all Hyde?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Why can't I make a motion?
Why would you want to move it there?
I know you don't want to.
Why would you want to move it there?
I know you don't want to do it, but I do.
I don't know if I don't or not. You're not talking about number fourteen. All I'm trying to do is get an attorney that is sitting here next to me already as an attorney, so I'm going to put him on the top so that he will be the attorney or he may not be the attorney.
Okay, and if he is the attorney, then we can ask him. We'll ask him, okay?
No. Okay, Ms. Allen.
All right, Mr. Mayor.
So that's the, that's the agenda.
No, sir.
Item number three is consider approving Freezing Nichols Change Order number two in the amount of $11,236 to amend the existing contract pricing of the Granbury Town Square paving improvements project to remove the three-inch lace bark elms and replace the four-inch lace bark elm. And I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to talk a little more about this. I think we've got some other information.
You bet. Appreciate you taking it off the consent agenda so we could vet this out a little bit. We did look into this request. We received some comment back from the landscape and I'll let Rick Crown over, our Public Works Director, fill us in on that report.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman. Mayor, council members. Mr. Kaufman, thank you. This, this change order on our landscape project has to do with the possibility of upsizing our lace bark elm trees from three-inch calipers to four-inch calipers. The original ones were 12-foot tall with approximately four-foot canopy. What I'm going to give you a price on are 20-foot tall trees with a six-foot canopy and a four-inch caliper. The original price of the trees was $18,050. That was approximately $950 each. The change order for upscaling an inch on those trees is $11,236, which would kick it to about $1,500 apiece. There are some concerns, however. The project was constructed, the tree wells were constructed for a three-inch caliper and not a four. The problem is with the diameter of the tree well and the depth of it. There are concerns by the landscape architect that the possibility that the grate may not be able to sit on top of those trees. So in addition to that, we had a conversation with some of the personnel that take care of the plants around the square as well and they expressed their concerns that these trees may also be too large for these tree wells.
That was the master gardeners, right?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So with all that said, you're, it basically, it doesn't look like it would work?
The concerns are that they may not survive, that the holes may be too big for the root ball, if I could put it in those terms, sir, yes.
Would you have to change the steel grating where that hole is right there?
The holes are concrete and they're set. Yes.
The square bars.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Council, you heard some, Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Mayor. They make those in different sizes, you know, Rick, the grates.
Oh, the hole that.
Concrete.
Set it.
I know. I mean, didn't they know going in that we might want to change this because it was talk of the height and the width of that, of the tree?
Not to my knowledge, sir. It's what the plan's called for. It's the way it was constructed.
I understand, but when we were talking about it, it might have been before you got here, I don't think so. We were talking about trucks going by and hitting them and this and that and they stopped, they talked in about going with a taller tree. I don't recall.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Patterson.
The architect or whoever designed this well and this metal grate that fits over it, he's telling you that the metal grate won't take a four-inch? I mean, how long's it take a tree, a three-inch tree to get to four inches? And what, I'm a little bit lost. Why would you put a three-inch grate around a three-inch tree and not plan for growth?
Let me, let me respond to that, Rick. I think we're confused on the grate. What he's saying is the, the square hole that was formed in concrete is too small to accommodate the big ball that they need to put in the hole with that bigger tree. And the depth of digging that out is not possible, apparently, because of the clearance down below, which would make the tree set up in the four-foot square higher than what the grate would allow it to lay down because the root ball would be up higher.
Well, thank you for that clarification.
I think that's what he's trying to say.
What's underneath there, out there? I have no idea.
It's got concrete sides, but I think it's dirt on the bottom of it where the roots is and we can go down.
The gravel on the bottom as well.
Why can't you dig it deeper? I mean, we have tore up more concrete around this square than I think we have in a whole downtown or a whole Granbury city limits this year.
There's 19 trees. 16 around the courthouse and three on the business side of Pearl.
Well, why don't we?
Councilman Couch.
Why don't we approve this subject to the four-inch trees fitting in the wells? That way, if you happen to find a solution to this, you're good to go.
So order one four-inch tree and test it? Is that what you're asking me? Well, that's not a bad idea.
I want us to be more definite about the size of the ball that are sitting in the yard somewhere. Measure that against the hole around the square and see if that still is a problem. If it's a problem, we're going to have to have three-inch trees. If it's not a problem, we listen with the four-inch trees.
Did they, did they not do that, though? I thought you were saying that they, they have determined that it would not fit.
That's what the landscape architect said.
Only reason it won't fit, Mayor, is because they don't want to dig out the concrete. They make the concrete bigger around and dig it deeper. Right or wrong? I mean, if you go get a tree in your yard, if you get one that big, you dig that size hole.
I think that the.
That big, you dig that big.
That's a bigger change order.
The change order would be substantially higher. If you'll recall, those concrete frames have a metal frame around it as well that the metal grate fits into. So not only would the grate be too small, but the.
You'd have to change some of the irrigation as well.
So the, so the change order right now, just changing, buying, purchasing a different-sized tree is $11,000. If we go into reconstruction of the concrete, and I guess we'd have to put some different grates up there, there's a lot, it'd be a lot more money involved in the change order.
I don't have a problem pursuing what Mr. Couch has suggested. We can certainly look into that and see how it goes. And if there's any possible way to get the bigger tree in there and it survives, great. But I don't want to do it if it's not warranted by the landscaper. And I don't think anybody up here would want to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So in effect, what we're going to be voting on is not only the $11,000, but some additional cost. Let me ask, in your experience, is the revision or is expanding the hole going to be more or less than the $11,000 when it's all set down?
It could possibly be more.
So basically, we're talking about the smallest portion of this project to put a one-inch, one-inch more in there.
But we're not expanding the hole.
We're going to have to.
Not under his scenario.
No.
You didn't listen.
So, so.
How much more is it, Rick?
Councilman, Councilman Allen, here's the floor.
So, so, and I've got a little bit of landscape background. When you buy, when you buy a tree in the landscape world, you're more, you're as much concerned about the size of the ball as the caliper because that's where everything comes from, am I correct? So if we buy a bigger caliper, taller tree with a smaller ball on it, are we not shooting ourselves in the foot? Are we not going to choke that tree out in reality going forward just to put a prettier tree there for today?
Possibly.
Thank you.
And once again, Councilman Couch, what was your suggestion?
My suggestion is to go ahead and approve the additional cost provided that the four-inch tree will fit.
tree will fit and flourish in the existing hole.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, we're gonna have three-inch trees.
That's, and I'm okay with that, because that way we don't change anything.
I do have one question. Rick, how big is the hole now?
Sir?
Uh, don't go get an expert up here now. I know Mr. Mobley was a landscaper, but, uh, I was, I was for seventeen years.
Okay.
Uh, how big is the hole now?
Well, it's, it's made for a three-inch caliper tree.
How big is it in diameter?
I think they're four foot across.
Okay. The rule of thumb...
They're forty, they're forty-eight diameter, thirty-six inches deep.
Say it again, Rick.
Four, three by four feet.
Four, okay. What's the rule of thumb? Used to be, when I was in landscape, it's been years ago, was twelve inches for ever, every inch. Now where's, you went four inches, you want a forty-eight inch hole is what you want. The guy can tell you behind you, I know he'll know that, of what it is. So if it's forty-eight inches, it's gonna work.
I think Councilman Couch has the idea of going ahead and if we do this and it fits, and the landscape people say it will work and that it will blossom...
I second it, sir.
Then, then that's the way to go. If it doesn't...
Yep.
Then we got a three-inch tree that we wait for it to get, to be four-inch. So, Mr. Couch, would you like to make a motion on that?
I did make that motion.
You did? What was it? Make it again for me.
Um, to go ahead and prove the additional cost for a four-inch caliber tree, uh, provided that it will fit and flourish in the existing hole.
Provided, okay. So there we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, but Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on this item, council? I will say one thing, that, uh, are we gonna get our results from Rick or the experts? Who's gonna?
I'll get it to you.
Okay.
I'll get you.
Thank you. So we have a first and a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
That is approved.
Thanks, Rick.
Thank you, Rick. The next one is, as I, as I stated, we will now go into consider appointing Hyde Law Firm as the city attorney, and this was put on the agenda by Councilman Tony Allen, so, Mr. Allen, do you want to kick this one off?
I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't hear you.
This item was put on by you, item number seventeen, to appoint...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of Hyde Law Firm as the city attorney.
I thought you were talking about the other one, I thought, well, you know, we're gonna move that one.
Okay, no.
Yes, I think it, myself, it's time to go ahead and make a move on our attorney. Paul Hyde's Law Firm did a great job the last time. They filled in for us whenever we needed help. They had a year contract. He said, uh, I'll waver it. If you get somebody else, we'll do it. The city manager brought us another firm, and we found out, experience sometimes is not the best. Uh, it cost us money. So, we, uh, I'll make a motion, we hire their firm for one year.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and we have a second. Is more discussion on that item, council?
Mayor, I know what the cost is per month, so, but I think we should probably go ahead and discuss that so people know that we're paying the, the firm on a monthly basis.
Do we need to discuss that now? Do we need to discuss that now or just put that on another kind of item?
Something.
Okay. We will do that, right, this time? Councilman Couch, you want to discuss it or kick it off or?
Yeah, um, Paul, do you want to pick that one?
Absolutely.
Tell us how good you are.
Yes, Mayor, councilman, city manager, Chris Kaufman. The agreement that we have put to the council this evening is for a flat rate of nine thousand dollars a month, which is what we charged the city of Granbury prior to when we had the contract before. That includes all legal services for the city, excepting any litigation matters, which is the same deal that we had with the city before. We charge an hourly rate if the city chooses to have us handle any litigation matters of two hundred dollars per hour, a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a paralegal.
Gentlemen. Asking for a one-year contract.
Do we want to tag that on to the motion then and go ahead and have, uh, Chris Kaufman and our city manager go ahead and write up the contract as stated? Okay, it's right there.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley.
Is there gonna be any clause, any, any out clause for, that you could use or the city can use? And if so, what is that?
The, uh, the out clause for the city, Councilman Mobley, is that...
Mobley.
Mobley.
Thank you, David.
Is that if the city chooses to discontinue the Hyde Law Firm services during that one year period, the city will have to pay out the remainder of the contract.
Out clause.
And if you decide to walk...
There's not any provision for that.
Mr. City Manager, is it common, is it, is it more common to have an out clause of thirty days or not to have any out clause at all?
Well, I can only speak for where I've been exposed, and typically it has an out. I will admit that the political climate here is...
I call a motion, Mayor.
Somewhat...
I call a motion.
Call the question, Councilman Allen. You have a second? No second?
Second.
We got, we have a second by Councilman Parsons? Okay, at this time, we have a first and a second. Take a record vote. Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Definitely no.
Councilperson Myers?
Aye.
Okay. That is approved as is said, uh, motion. Congratulations. Our next one is a, uh, item number four, is receive and discuss status report from Hibbs and Todd on the water treatment plant project. Mr. Kaufman, who we have there?
You bet. I'd like to introduce Keith Kendall of Amplite Hibbs and Todd, and he's gonna provide us an update and, uh, we try to help you with any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, council members, for the record, my name is Keith Kendall, chief operating officer for Amplite Hibbs and Todd. Wanted to take this opportunity just to give you an update of where we're at on the new two-and-a-half MGD water treatment plant. We had been striving for an October the first start-up date to be producing water. While I talk about schedules, a couple of definitions I want to go over. Substantial completion in the contract was just that, having the plant up and operating and producing water. The final completion dates that we refer to is all the nice things are done, the sidewalks are done, we've demoed the existing water treatment plant, the asphalt parking is in. So there's usually two dates for that. And working with the contractor, what he's now projecting, we do not expect to be producing water until November the first of two thousand and seventeen, about thirty days later than the October one date. Few reasons for that is, one, if you may recall, the May two thousand and sixteen flood events that you had regarding the weather delays with that. Another item is we've added some things to the scope in addition to utility conflicts that we found at the water treatment plant. And the bottom line is that the contractor has moved at his own pace. We have tried to move him a little bit faster to make that, but he has moved at his pace, albeit the work has been good. We have not, not had any change orders to date. The existing water treatment plant has continued to operate successfully, and he's worked well with the staff to accommodate them when we've had conflicts within it. It's unfortunate that we're not making that October the first date, but our current target is November the first. We wanted to make sure we made the council aware of that. Of course, the significance of October one is that's when the BRPUA swatch line water goes back to A-MUD, the point seven-two MGD that you currently have under contract. My understanding is the city is working or considering an agreement with A-MUD to be purchasing water at a flat rate past the October the rate that allows both the city to sell water to A-MUD or A-MUD to sell water to the city going back. In addition to that, the water treatment plant can still continue, because that's one of the last items on the contract. So if we're putting two to three hundred thousand gallons per day out of that plant, which it's been doing, it can continue to do so while we're going through the startup of the plant. So I just wanted to make y'all aware of, it looks like we're gonna be producing water thirty days later than expected. The good news is that project's four hundred thousand dollars on our budget. Now, key to with that project is, as you might learn, as you remember from last September, we did a fifteen million dollar water transmission project because we can produce water out of the plant, but we can adequately distribute it to the city without having portions of that fifteen million dollar project done, primarily the scout camp pump station, the scout camp water transmission line, the three seventy-seven PRV valve, in addition to the water treatment plant tie-in. They were scheduled to be finished October the one, but that's probably gonna run to about two weeks, about the middle of October before they get done currently. Most of the scout camp line is installed, but they've still got to do all of the backfill within it, which most of that's done, but they've been, they've got disinfection and pressure testing to do on eighteen thousand feet of line to go with that. So still running through that. The two go hand in hand. You're not gonna get water out of the plant and adequately distribute it through the city without both being done. What we're looking at for both schedules is November the first would be the date that the water treatment plant would be coming out, producing water. That's what the contractor is targeting. I will tell you that we are looking at all the different startups. We're going to have our operator specialists out there in the middle of first of October working with the contractor, and if we can get pre-treatment, disinfection, and treatment going, we're gonna produce water out of that plant before November first. We're gonna be continuing to strive for that, but we're not going to make the October first goal that we, we had for that, uh, with that. So just want to make sure that you're aware of what we're doing, what we're progressing forward. The good news is, like I said, we are under budget. Within it, the bad news is that we're running about thirty days behind our October one date that we had projected for the water treatment plant. Be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
What's the additional cost, Chris?
Um, the, we're gonna be buying water from, uh, the A-MUD plant at about twelve dollars a thousand, is what the agreement says. Of course, it's gonna be an emergency, uh, agreement, type agreement where we'll be able to reciprocate that in case they were in a bind, and I know they're gonna be doing some upgrading to their plant soon, and they may very well need to buy the water from us at that point as well. So, uh, it seems high, but, uh, not many choices out there. But it is reciprocal and, uh, of course, uh, worst-case scenario, probably for the month of October, I'm thinking it might be as much as a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I don't anticipate it being that much, but it could be.
We did, we did some figures looking at that, you know? If we operated the plant, we had an estimate of about eighty-two thousand a month in O&M costs, running full, two-and-a-half MGD. Your five-year average in October was about twelve million, six hundred and ninety thousand gallons. That works out to be about a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars for the month of October. I would not be surprised if we're buying some of the water in November as well.
Yeah.
Uh, within it, too, the November usage for the five-year average was dropped in half, about six million, five hundred and thirty-two thousand, or about seventy-six thousand dollars, at twelve dollars a thousand for each of those prices. So, you know, there are some costs that go with that. Unfortunately, you can't use your four hundred thousand savings to pay for that water. You can do things like reimbursing the water line replacement that you did for the downtown square revitalization with that and reimbursing the city with those funds, or doing other water treatment and plan, or water improvement projects, but you can't use it to purchase water, the drinking water state revolving funds, so.
Mayor?
Councilman Couch.
Um, Keith, when you, when you say it's gonna cost us twelve dollars per thousand from A-MUD, um, that's delivered to the customer?
No. Just the flat, flat rate that you take, as you take the water that's metered from the connection from A-MUD to the city, whatever amount that is that you take from us, it's gonna be twelve dollars per thousand, is the flat rate. You've still got to pump it to the customer.
But that's treated, ready to go?
Treated and ready to go, yes.
Okay. And so what is the cost, uh, on the new plant per thousand in that same scenario?
The new cost of the plant at two-and-a-half MGD is about a dollar twenty-five per thousand. On the operation and maintenance cost, that is not including the cost for the water. In other words, you pay several hundred thousand dollars a year for the water rights for that. That is strictly just O&M, so you're not comparing apples and apples with that. I don't have the cost for you for an apples and apples comparison, because I don't know what all you include. If you include the debt service for the plant, if you include any administration costs, if you include any other salaries beside the water treatment plant, because I can tell you the twelve dollar per thousand that you're looking at from A-MUD that they're agreeing to has in probably CIP costs, administration costs, operation and maintenance costs, and the cost of that water for the purchase. I know what y'all pay per acre foot within that, but I haven't gone through and calculated to do an apples-to-apples comparison, uh, council member, for that.
Could I add to that?
Go ahead.
Uh, I would just say that, uh, without the debt service, the calculations that Ava and I have put together are about three fifty to three sixty per thousand, and then we've got the debt service on top of that, so.
Do a guess on that number?
Well, it, it's not level. It's not even mortgage payment like you would on a home, so it's, it's yet to be determined. When we start making those payments, then we'll be able to figure that out for you. But we do have some numbers budgeted, but the first year is lower than the second year and the third year, and it steps up eventually as our other debt rolls off. This debt is structured to, to fill that, that deficit.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
City manager, if they buy water from us, we're gonna charge them twelve thou, twelve dollars a...
That, that agreement will be on your next council meeting.
Good deal.
It's just ready to go at the next meeting.
Now, the bad news is, because I didn't know we was gonna buy, has to pay all this water, the, uh, Mr. Kendall, but, uh, what's a penalty on this? Because we put a penalty clause in there.
The liquidated damages that you have associated with this contract were set by the city's standards of that cog, which is a maximum of five hundred dollars per day.
Five hundred days?
We had this discussion back when we awarded it. We were kinda at the point of, that's not gonna recuperate all our costs we have to buy water from A-MUD, and that was noted within that.
Yeah.
It's also noted that the city adopted in that cog and those were the, though, we have to go by those standards within it for the five hundred dollars maximum that's allowed. Also noted that we could rebid the project, but we weren't going to make October. We would be substantially behind October and going to two thousand and eighteen, probably spring of two thousand and eighteen at that point, because if we wanted to rebid it, that means reject all bids, start the advertisement again over a thirty-day process, then go through the award again, then the notice proceeding, start construction, so.
With all the rain and stuff...
Our original final completion date was September the twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen.
With all the rain, I think you done a good job.
Go ahead.
Keith, if you could fill, I know that Chris probably has these numbers on top of his head, if you don't, but the, um, actual extension of the contract days based on bad weather and other circumstances, could you tell us a little bit about that? Because I don't think we're gonna be accruing penalties into November.
Okay, yeah, the, the contract dates that, we have given them eighty days between the weather events that happened, primarily, you may remember the May two thousand and sixteen flooding events. We also added on the SCADA at the city's request. They wanted to go ahead and, we requested this beforehand, but unfortunately it came in afterwards, about sixty thousand dollars of SCADA improvements for the distribution system and the tanks and controls that were added into the contract. He got additional thirty days for that. We've also had utility conflicts out there that he's had to manage that's caused that there's no work that we gave him time. So we have gone from a July twenty-fifth substantial completion date to an October the twenty, October the thirteenth substantial completion date with those eighty days. And then subsequently, the final completion date went from the September twenty-third to, or to the December the twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, with those eighty days added into the contract. Again, we did not do that in a vacuum. All of those dates and contract times have been in the meeting minutes since last April of two thousand and seventeen, because the majority of them happened at that time. It's just, we can't ask a contractor to do additional work without giving additional time. We do not give days for rain days that are on the average. In other words, if we get three inches of rain during the month of May and it rains three inches, sorry, you don't get any additional time for rain. But when we have a rain event like we did in May two thousand and sixteen where it rained every day in May, and we had the flooding events that did occur, the city filed their disaster recovery claims, we have to give them additional time for that.
Could you fill them in a little bit on the decant line and the savings we were able to-
With the decant line, that was, we had a change in that because when we bid that, we had proposed easement, that easement changed significantly. The contractor, Graycon, did not want to work with us on that. They did not like the location of it. They didn't want to do it. They were wanting a substantial amount of money to do that. We kind of put our heads together, worked real hard, and we decided to have Pepper Lawson, our C Mar contractor that's doing the water transmission lines, do that. We just took that away from their contract from Graycon at the water treatment plant. Subsequently, saved the city right at about a hundred thousand dollars, eighty to a hundred thousand dollars by even able to do that versus what the contractor wanted within it. And that eighty to a hundred thousand was a savings of no guarantee by the existing water treatment plant contractor of what happens when he's putting that line in. If he wanted a guarantee, the savings went up to about two hundred and eighty thousand of what we've saved by going with Pepper Lawson, the C Mar contractor. So there's a lot of innovation, a lot of putting our heads together and trying to make that work for the decant line, because it is, it's a tough construction project, the decant line, or the location that where it's at within it. And the Graycon used that to, I just want to concentrate on my water treatment plant and priced it accordingly. And we said, that's fine. We won't take your pricing. We need you to concentrate on the water treatment plant. We found somebody else to do it, and by the way, we saved money, so we moved forward.
Well, I got to give you thanks for that because you were able to work with the Water Development Board to, to get their blessing to allow the C Mar contractor to work on this contract as well.
There were a lot of levels that-
And I'm, and I'm hoping, just to give council a little security there, you know, we spent over two hundred and forty thousand on the water improvements on the square, and I'm hoping that we can get those funds that were saved on the other project allocated towards that to reimburse us for those funds that were really utility-generated funds that we can then turn around and pay for this water we're going to need to buy.
And I have sent, at, at, at Mr. Kaufman's request, I have already sent all the environmental that Text Dot did for that. It looks the environmental will be fine. We're waiting on a few of the DVE information. They have to approve that, and that's probably my greatest concern, but at the same time, it's Text Dot. I'm pretty sure they covered their bases. So if we get the environmental and the DVE covered by what the government board, you won't have an issue in getting that two hundred and forty thousand reimbursed with the four hundred thousand that's left in the water treatment plant contract. And I guess while I'm up here updating, to let you know, one, as a reminder, we've done two point seven million for the meters, AMI. You did sixteen million, four hundred and thirty thousand for the water treatment plant, fifteen million for the water transmission line within it. Financial savings just in interest alone was little over six million dollars. We're four hundred thousand dollars under budget on the water treatment plant. We are currently three hundred and thirty thousand dollars under budget on the meter project, and I don't see that really changing, to be honest with you, because actually there's more left in the construction lot item. We're projected to be under budget pretty significantly on the water transmission line. We won't know that till we get GMP three within it. But I guess in summary, you're right, I'm, I've added eighty days to a, on one contract and two weeks late on another contract for thirty-four million, and we're under budget. We haven't had any change orders to this point.
Thank you.
I, I will say, and I don't know how long it's been, but we've known about this for a long time. I know Mr. Kaufman here has been on the phone months ago when we realized it wasn't going to make the timetable. Correct?
Well, we, we knew that it was going to be a real challenge for the water transmission lines to meet the timetable within that. The water treatment plant, we kept hoping that we would have some things done, but the five-inch rain a few weeks ago killed that. And I'll give you a pri-, and also, quite honestly, we underestimated, both me being and the contractor too, because I thought we had plenty of time to do this, the severity of that small site. And I'll give you a really good example of how that impacts the construction. We have excavation for a flocculation basin, and we have excavation for a sludge-holding basin. For this excavation, I had to put the material somewhere. Guess where? My sludge-holding basin while I get the flock basin done. So there's just, and it's continued that way, kind of as a cascade event of, okay, I've got to get the concrete done before I can get the electrical in. I've got to get the electrical done before I can get the HVAC guys in. We could never get that parallel construction until we got the membrane building up. And I was, and I'm not making excuses for the contractor because we are still continuing to tell him how unhappy we are with his response of trying to speed this up. I know November one doesn't sound like a long time, but you know, this was an eighteen-month contract for substantial completion in twenty months. I was still, I wish we could have got there within it to make the October one. The issue with that now, though, is it wouldn't have mattered because the water transmission lines, as we always had a concern about, aren't going to be ready October one. It's going to be probably a couple of weeks in October before they're ready to go. The reason for that is, one, you know what a wet summer we've had. Secondly, trying to get eighteen thousand feet of line in with the rocks that they've encountered and doing that, starting in March of this year and trying to finish in October one, has been a pretty substantial challenge within that. If they finish the middle of October, I'm going to be clapping and celebrating because they have done a fantastic job if that gets finished in that time.
Thank you, Keith. Council, any more questions for Keith? Thank you. If that was a discussion item only, and I hope you can stick with the timeline again here.
Yes, sir, we will, do the best we can. Very, thank you.
Next, we want to move into item number five, which is a public hearing and consider a request for First National Bank, and it's got an A and a B, and I'm going to call upon Scott Sopcek to give us a staff report on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a proposal. Let me get you kind of get our accomplice bearing as to where this property is located. It's located to the northwest intersection of Peck Road and US three seventy-seven. The subject property that's being final platted is in the internal side of that red line just behind the bank. So that red line is the, the demarcation line of the final plat application. What's being proposed for this site in this final plat application is a approximate ninety-five hundred square foot professional office building to be located behind the bank. We've seen this property as a preliminary plat a few months prior to. The, the applicant has done a good job in getting three variances associated with this particular application as discussed as a part of the preliminary plat application. They're not wanting to upgrade Peck Road at this time, rather they're putting in a deposit with the city to allow for the construction of their half of Peck Road at a later date. They're also dedicating right-of-way property, you can see, along Highway three seventy-seven for the future expansion of US three seventy-seven from four to six lanes once Text Dot is able to schedule that and fund it. So as the mayor mentioned, there's two parts to this development, the first and foremost of which is a facilities improvement agreement. That is a two-party contract bound between the city of Granbury and the developer for guaranteeing the improvements. See if I can, the IT department provided us some new technology, so I'll see if I can dazzle us a little bit here with this technology. So here's the ba-, the existing bank and the approximate ninety-five hundred square foot building located behind the bank. As a part of the plating of the bank property when it was final platted, the owner proposed and the council accepted to deposit sidewalk cost along the bank property. So there is no sidewalk at this time along this portion of the bank. As a part of this proposal, the developer is wanting to construct the sidewalk all the way along Peck Road and wrapping it around three seventy-seven, so take on the entire burden. The city is holding roughly thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars that we received from the original final plat of the bank building. So as a part of this development, what's being proposed insofar as the application is to have the developer construct the entire sidewalk, and then once that's installed, inspected, and accepted by the city, release that holding that we're, we're, we were given for the bank property back to the developer to reimburse them for construction costs. That'll take place again after inspection. So the other little nuance we have here is we have the streetlights that are located on Peck Road. There's two of them. That's a part of the facilities improvement agreement. The council did issue a variance to not place the streetlights along three seventy-seven prior. We have a variance to not run a water line along three seventy-seven. There's an existing water line south of three seventy-seven. It's an eight-inch line alongside service. They would have to bore under three seventy-seven to get to it. Instead, they are choosing to use a water line along Peck Road. You can see currently that the water line, let's see, yeah, runs here. This is an existing water line. They intend to tie on to, you can see, the water line stops roughly at this hydrant. They'll build this portion of the water line to the extent of the platted boundary and then run an internal water line that will terminate at a hydrant here. So the variance that we have is to not extend a water line along three seventy-seven. Your engineer is recommending approval of that variance. The, the two little nuances that we have with the FIA is, one, the thirteen thousand dollar rough cost for the sidewalk, and secondly, this internal water line was originally presented as a six-inch water line. The city standard is an eight inch. It does have, as this is vacant, vacant property to the west, there is potential for continuation and looping the system at a later date. So that needs to meet our minimum design standards. Early this morning, I coordinated with our engineer and the applicant's engineer. We do have submitted plans showing that meeting that eight-inch requirement. So as a part of executing this FIA, we need to recognize that, that the plans have been updated. The six-inch line is no longer the case. Our engineer has approved this eight-inch line update, and we also need, in executing this FIA, to have council acknowledge the usage of that thirteen thousand, nine hundred dollars that the city's holding and approving the application of those funds for the construction of the sidewalk. So this is the email that I received from the engineer saying that he has revised water plat, revised water line plans to an eight inch. This is staff's recommendation on the FIA. City staff recommends approval of the FIA with the acknowledgement that the internal water line has been changed to eight inch on the revised engineering plans, and that the council desires to use the thirteen thousand, nine hundred held by the city to reimburse the developer for the construction of the sidewalks as depicted on the approved sidewalk plan. This is your recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission on the final plat application. You can see these particular variances are associated with a preliminary plat that are already approved. Your engineer is recommending approval of this variance highlighted in yellow to not provide water along three seventy-seven. There is water available along Peck Road, and that's where they're choosing to tie into. So Mayor, Council, again, that's your staff recommendation, your Planning and Zoning Commission recommendation on your FIA and your final plat as presented by the applicant.
And on that final plat, we would need to vote on that variance, that particular variance-
First.
-before we do that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question, concerns about this item or both these items to Scott? If not, I'll entertain a motion, first of all, on the FIA to approve the FIA with the said conditions.
So moved.
I got a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That FIA is, is approved. Like I said, on the final plat, we will need to look at this variance as requested at section three point nine and four point six to not provide water along Highway three seventy-seven frontage. Council, I'll entertain a motion to approve that variance.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
Second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Now we'll move into the, the, the final plat. You seen the final plat there? Council, any more discussion on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion, motion to approve the final plat with the one plat variance regarding the water along the north side of Highway three seventy-seven.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, any more discussion? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move into item number six, which is a public hearing and consider approving a request for a final plat. Scott, I'm going to have you give us a staff report on that one, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request for the, in essence, it's a replat, should have been an amending plat, but it's a replat to allow for two issues. We've seen this plat probably eight months to a year ago. It was filed for record. The purpose of the replat is to address two issues. We have Scribner's errors, and in essence, those are surveying errors with these bearings and distances in these lots that are shaded or clouded. And the surveyor needed to resubmit in order to address those bearing and distant errors. And then secondly, you can see these off-site easements that go just south, traverse just south of the development, and you see these easement filing numbers at County Clerk's office. Those were not placed in their proper place on the plat when they were filed for record. So we should have had a document number recorded along with the original plat that was filed. So the purpose of this replat application is, in essence, to address those, those two clerical errors on this plat. There was an opportunity, opportunity to staff approve this as an amending plat application. It went through DRC to address these two issues in order to kind of shorten the timeframe in order to get these clerical issues resolved. However, our ordinance requires a twenty-one-day turnaround in order to have these filed for record at the courthouse. Once we go beyond those twenty-one days, then it automatically kicks in a planning and zoning and city council hearing. So that's what happened. We ran out of time in getting the plat back to us in order to process. Again, this plat's already filed for record, and this replat, you can see, this sole purpose note, the sole purpose is to correct those two errors as mentioned on the plat application. Your Planning and Zoning Commission and your city engineer and your city staff recommend approval as presented.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on this item. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any discussion or any questions for Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the replat as requested.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman, is that Parson down there?
Second.
Second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved, item number six. Item number seven is a public hearing approving a request of, I'm not even trying to pronounce that name, but this is a rezoning here. Scott, you want to give us a staff report on that one?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What this location is, is, and I apologize for the graininess of the image. We actually got approval to update our imagery, so we'll have clear images for council hopefully in a few months from now. This is the old Nizza Pizza building, and you can see Monte's Burritos here. This property was, has never been zoned. It's been operating grandfather non-conforming as a restaurant for some time. However, since the vacation of Nizza Pizza, we have a stipulation in our zoning ordinance that if the use has been vacated or abandoned for a period of greater than six months, which is the case here, then they lose their conforming, non-conforming status. So in order to reoccupy the building and entertain a new CO and get the business vibrant again, we need to go through the process of rezoning it to its proposed use. So what we have in this particular instance is a, a interested party that wants to open that as a donut shop, a restaurant. And you can see the property is zoned interim holding. Interim holding is basically a placeholder for uses that need to be rezoned and reconsidered once they pass their non-conforming status. You can see how old this image is. This is the old Taco Express facade on the building, so it's, it's quite dated. The comprehensive plan considers this for commercial activity, so the proposed rezoning to heavy commercial is consistent with our comprehensive plan. We do have a particular nuance in that a restaurant with a drive-through window is allowed by right light commercial. The applicant did apply for heavy commercial in lieu of light commercial. Thus, the planning and zoning, zoning report to you, you'll notice in your staff report that the P and Z recommended by three A's and two N's approval of the heavy commercial rezoning request. The two N's were, were based on their desire to zone it to light commercial. You can see our land use matrix on the very top where a restaurant with a drive-through the window or drive-in and by window is allowed by right light commercial. So those two N's believe that there was no need to upzone it to heavy commercial to allow for more intense usage considerations when this particular use, the specified use of a donut shop can be done by right light commercial. They worked against it. They just wanted to downzone it to its proper zoning classification light commercial. So it's coming to you from P and Z with three A's, two N's. They weren't against the business being there. They just, the two N's wanted light commercial. Your staff supports light commercial. There, there is no need to actually zone this- There is no need to actually zone this to its highest, higher use as catalogued in our zoning ordinance. I did have a discussion with our contract attorney, and there is, the city council can decrease the zoning intensity on this particular application by a majority vote. There's no need to get a three-quarter vote in order to approve this, because when you look at our zoning ordinance, according to our attorney toes at the time, our zoning ordinance reads any recommendation of denial. There was no recommendation of denial by the P&amp;Z here. They just approved the heavy commercial rezoning. And the attorney at toes said they can, they can consider the land use matrix and de-intensify, but still maintain consistency with the requesters' application, get the restaurant there. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions regarding this, Mayor, but it's coming, it is, the business-
So the council could make a motion to approve a light commercial or a heavy commercial tonight?
Yes, and either motion would require a majority vote.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up to the public. Anybody want, wish to speak on this item? Not I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any question or concerns on this particular item?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilperson Parsons.
Scott, you're saying that the other properties around it are light commercial?
The other properties, you can see, there's a great weight of heavy commercial. So the dark red that you see there is all heavy commercial, and that's one thing, I'm glad you brought that to the table, Councilman Parsons. One of the things that P&amp;Z discussed, the three As, says, well, there's such a large concentration of heavy commercial surrounding the area. You can see to the east, however, Monty's Burritos is a restaurant with a drive-through, and it's light commercial. So there's a greater weight of heavy commercial around the surrounding area, as you mentioned. But you can see, based on the minutes and P&amp;Z and their vote, that they kind of wrestled with the distinction there.
Was that kind of what drove the applicant to go to heavy commercial, because of all the other ones around him?
Yeah, from, from what I understand, in talking with one of my staff members, they saw that the proliferation of heavy commercial was around it, and the comp plan supported commercial. If you recall, our new comp plan supports general retail, and, which is really more akin to light commercial. So because the comp plan kind of swung the door that way to a heavy commercial application, I think that's where it went, as opposed to one of my staff members, or maybe me getting involved and saying, you don't need heavy commercial in this instance.
Councilperson Parsons, I apologize. You have anything else on that?
No, thanks.
Counsel, any more discussion, any more questions for Scott?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Scott, so if we approve the heavy commercial side, is there any way to pull it back? As opposed to light commercial and moving, going to heavy? That's what we're deliberating here, I think, isn't it?
Right. So typically, in my experience, I see zoning requests move to what the requesters asking for. No more intensification beyond that. So if you go beyond that, and there's a city-initiated downzoning back, then there's an entitlement issue, development entitlement or an occupancy entitlement issue that the property owner can come back and say, well, why'd you do that? There's a certain, I don't wanna use the word, loss of usage, but I would, I would think that the requester could have that argument.
But the main argument for heavy commercial was, basically, everybody else is doing it.
There was a proliferation around it on the zoning map, and the comp plan supported it, is my understanding. And that's, and I think that's more on my staff and saying, you need heavy commercial here, and talking with one of my planners. We may wanna get the applicant up here, Councilman Mayor, and, but I do wanna make sure that city staff is reading into the minutes that the proposal from the applicant to operate a donut store, a restaurant with a drive-through window, is allowed by right in light commercial. That gets them, with no SUPs required, they just need to work with our building department once the zoning's in place, be it light commercial or heavy commercial. And so that discussion at P&amp;Z was, from the two Nays, is we don't see a reason, based on his or her request to get a donut shop there, why they need heavy commercial.
So it's not gonna hinder their ability to do business?
It's a donut shop.
Or any, or any other restaurant?
Restaurants are allowed by right like commercial. If they wanna expand to something beyond a restaurant with a drive-through, it may require heavy commercial, but that's not what's on the applicant's request.
The heavy commercial that's in that area, would those also fit into the light commercial?
No. So if we traverse to the west, we have that old muffler shop and the mobile gas station, convenience store, those are all heavy commercial type uses. And then, you know, when you talk planning, you get into this adjacency and compatibility of uses issue. So when you have that much heavy commercial activity, you know, it's really council's discretion to say, you know, it's, it's all a big lump of heavy commercial. We may have a couple of spots of light commercial in there, but it's all, you know, it's one heavy commercial district by and large, but.
Thank you.
Does anybody in the council wanna hear from the applicant? Okay.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Councilor now.
Like Mr. Mobley said, if we went light now, they could bring it back later.
Yeah.
Yeah. In light, we'll do what they want anyway.
Exactly.
Let's do it. He's standing up back there. He might wanna say something.
Yeah, go ahead. Since we got the applicant here, kinda enlighten the council here a little bit more why you did what you did, okay? Go ahead.
Good evening. It was a restaurant. It's been a restaurant, it's gonna be a restaurant, you know? I prefer to have its own heavy, I have a potential tenant there. I'm not the leaser, I own the building, who wants to put a donut shop, but if it doesn't go through with him, then I need to lease it to somebody else. But it's gonna be a restaurant, though.
Counsel, any questions for the owner? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Counsel? You got two options there, entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'm gonna go with heavy commercial.
I got a motion to approve the heavy commercial?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Myers. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved for heavy commercial. Move my place here. Next item is item number eight, is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance for Tony Levejean for a SUP. Scott, you wanna give us a staff report on that one, please?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This property is zoned heavy commercial. There current, there has been previously a SUP to allow for used auto sales on the site. You can see an SUP is required under heavy commercial. The gentleman also wishes to sell used boats, doesn't wish to do any repair work. There's no, there's no building suitable to do internal repair work. So all he wants to do is use boat sales and used auto sales. You can see the property itself is divided into two components, the larger of the two, houses, like a tank farm toward the back where gas tanks are, has another office building along the front edge. The lower left-hand corner is the office building and the site that he wishes to apply the SUP to. He's supplied us with site plan showing the layout and framing the area that he wishes to use for auto display. Your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the SUP unanimously with the three conditions, that the SUP shall be for one year from the date of council approval, expire on September fifth, 2018. Again, we review those based on performance, that the display area for the cars and boats are located on the west side of the property, on approved hard surface as defined by ordinance, and only two rows of boats and vehicles to be parked there. Again, that will be consistent with the site plan. One row is long, three seventy-seven, the second row is in the back to allow for ingress, egress through the site. And parking and sales and inventory and display shall be provided on the site plan as shown and outlined in the approved site plan. The remainder of the five point six seven acres is not to be used for the sale of used cars and boats unless the SUP site plan is amended by council. That was approved with conditions unanimously by your Planning and Zoning Commission. Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item, item number eight? Not I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is any questions or concerns to Scott on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a motion, a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number nine is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance for request of Mark Jackson for an SUP. Scott, can you give us a staff report on this item, please?
Mayor, this particular proposal is for a unhosted two-suite bed and breakfast. It had SUPs in the past, up to five guest suites. It's a fairly large residential structure located on the northwest corner of Bridge and Thrash. It has a common drive. See if I can get a better aerial here. So this is our zoning ordinance, and you can see an SUP is required in residential zone districts are eight point four, which is what the property is zoned. The subject property is highlighted in teal. The applicant has submitted us a site plan showing the layout of the property. Our ordinance requires for unhosted two parking spaces, parking space per guest suite. The applicant wants to have a caretaker there on site that will be there. The proposal is to have one suite in the cottage in the back and one suite in the main house on the bottom floor. The dialogue at Planning and Zoning Commission was, we had a couple of concerned neighbors that there wasn't enough parking. They did not want them parking along Bridge Street or Thrash Street. So as a part of the dialogue with P&amp;Z, the applicant did agree to add a third parking space, and that was voted on and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission as part of the report to the city council. The parking spaces will be located along Thrash Street. You can see the parking spaces aren't there currently, so the property owner will have to construct those prior to the final or the occupancy permit being issued for the B&amp;B. So your Planning and Zoning Commission is unanimously recommending approval of the SUP with the following conditions. The SUP shall expire two years from the city, the date of council approval. The accommodation shall be limited to two guest suites. The operation of the two-suite unhosted B&amp;B shall be operated in performance with all codes and policies governing that type of use. And the three required concrete parking spaces or asphalt spaces shall be installed, inspected, and accepted prior by the city, prior to the issuance of the CO or final for the B&amp;B. Again, back to the picture, you can see where that red star is, is where the three parking spaces are going. I had one of my planners go out with a map wheel to make sure that we had adequate space for the three parallel parking spaces or head-in parking spaces, and they do have enough space. We have a requirement in our zoning ordinance that allows for screening for headlights, headlights sweeps when they come in for head-in parking, but you can see the cottage is being used as kind of a screening for headlights to minimize any impact on neighboring neighbors. So again, Mayor, I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should the council or the mayor have any.
Thank you, Scott. At this time, this is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Not I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any more thoughts or discussion on this item? I think the applicant is here in the House today, so. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is actually a three-part item here. We got number ten, eleven, and twelve are all going together there. You have an SUP and a zoning and a plat. Scott, I wanna ask you to give a staff report on all three of them, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. What we have is a piece of property that's located just to the north northwest of the Acton Triangle. You can see the subject property bounded in that teal color again. What's being proposed here is a request to rezone the property from interim holding in green currently to heavy commercial. The base district heavy commercial zoning is to allow for the consideration of an SUP to allow for boat RV storage. And then we also have a preliminary plat application showing how the developer is going to sustain the proposed development with water and sewer and the infrastructure needed to support the development. This is the aerial shot. You can see this property is currently in survey, and it's a rural-type residential house. The track line comes up here, and it has frontage along Acton Highway and Fall Creek Highway. Our comprehensive plan allows for the consideration of commercial use in this particular area. The star shows that the approximate location, that brownish-redish area, is proposed for commercial activity. So the request to rezone to heavy commercial is consistent with our comprehensive plan recently adopted. This is a site plan that shows the layout of the warehouse and storage facility. You have the warehouse self-storage units here, and we have the RV and boat storage areas to the west. These are the elevations proposed by the applicant. You can see they meet our masonry standard. They're very good-looking warehouse buildings. They meet our masonry standard with a stone skirt on the bottom, and they have the tin standing seam metal roofs on top. You can see the side elevations here. These are the storage facilities for the boats and RVs. Again, the side elevation, mace, meeting our masonry standard, and the standing seam metal roof on top. This is the twenty-by-twenty office building. This will be fronting Acton Highway. It's got the four-twelve pitch roof on it. The main entrance to this facility will be on Acton Highway. The point of access onto Fall Creek Highway, one sixty-seven south, will actually be proposed as an egress drive only. So they'll come off Acton Highway and egress off of one sixty-seven. The purpose of that, when you look at the long, kind of a long-lean approach, there was no way to appropriately get a car to turn around and back out, so it's gonna be an egress point only. The landscaping plan submitted, they're aware of our landscaping plan. They did identify trees with a tree survey to save the trees along the fence line. That'll be used in part for screening fence as well. There's the fence elevation. Our zoning ordinance requires screening for commercial adjoining residential zone properties or residential uses. Even though the adjoining property is zoned interim holding, not residential, there's a residential use there. So this particular developer is willing to meet our ordinance and provide the residential screening fence along the screen line, all the way to the track line where that residence is located. This is also zoned interim holding, but it's in an ag exemption. There's no residential structure on that site, so they're terminating the fence at this point. And you can see from that point on, there's, in essence, a private detention fund that will be proposed to be constructed. Okay. So your Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request to heavy commercial and the SUP to allow for the adoption of the site plan for this proposed use, boat, trailer, storage, and warehouse units. As a part of the plat application, we have to look at what water and sewer is available. We're in Amad's Water District and Sewer District. They do have a ten-inch water line along FM one sixty-seven, and they- They do have a 10-inch water line along FM 167, and they have a 6-inch line along Acton Highway. So, they're requesting a variance to allow for the usage and the tie-in of the 6-inch water line. They're proposing here, you can see the water line loop tying into the 6-inch line. They're proposing that to be an 8-inch line, meeting our 8-inch minimum size standards as a part of a future facilities improvement agreement. Their variance is to allow for the 6-inch line to remain in place and just construct the internal 8-inch water line. Their sewer line along Acton Highway, again, is 3-inch. It's a low-pressure line. It's not a gravity line. We did get a letter from Amud saying that they had adequate water volume and capacity on both their water and sewer lines to serve this development. That's part of your staff agenda packet as well. There's a letter from Amud to that effect. This is your variance acknowledgement from your city engineer with Fries and Nichols. Your engineers and your planning and zoning commission are recommending approval of the plat-related variances to 364 to not provide sidewalk. I'll get to that in a minute. Along Fall Creek Highway only, they are proposing a sidewalk along Acton Highway. They're recommending approval of the variance to 39 and 45 to not provide sewer along street frontages. That would be Acton and FM 167, and 39 and 46 to not provide water along street frontages. They meet our minimum size requirement on 167. Again, this would only apply to Acton roadway on the 6-inch main. They are meeting our 8-inch requirement internal to the property. Let me get to a site plan here. The sidewalk that they're proposing is along Acton Highway. They were wanting to construct that, but they're not wanting to construct a sidewalk along this little panhandle piece. When you look at the existing impervious cover, there's a drive that actually comes through here and ties into this drive, and there's a bar ditch that actually comes through here. So, there is concrete impervious cover, in essence, along this backside to walk from property to property, and that's why they're requesting the variance to not place it on Fall Creek Highway. Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, that is a quick summary of the P&amp;Z deliberation. They're recommending approval of the heavy commercial, approval of the SUP, and approval of the plat with the recommended variances as vetted by your city engineer. I'll be happy to entertain any questions, should you have any.
And I will add to that, council. I think we have to vote on item number 11 first. Is that true, Scott?
Correct. We need to put the base district zoning in place before we consider the SUP.
Very good. Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing for item number 10, 11, and 12. Anybody in the public wish to speak on these items? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott on these items?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would say was express my disappointment in the comprehensive plan for not considering frontage on Acton Highway to be more retail-oriented. The city drives on retail, sales tax, and I'm just disappointed that that Acton road was not considered for that.
Council, any more discussion? If not, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion on number, item number 11. I entertain a motion to approve the zoning request as presented by the applicant.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Mayor, with your permission, on the SUP, I did want to mention that the SUP had two conditions imposed by your planning and zoning commission. They're listed on the screen for your reference. No wrecked vehicles or dismantling of vehicles in the storage facility, and all equipment shall be stored on and approved hard surface.
Very good. This was a pretty lengthy one, I gotta agree. So, next, we'll move into item number 10, which is the SUP. And as Scott has mentioned, there's two conditions on there, so not use the storage of the wreckage vehicles, and also, the equipment shall be stored and displayed in hard surface defined.
Slow move.
Council, any more discussion on that? I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with those said conditions.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion, council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll move down to the public hearing with the SUP. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
With variances.
With the variances, with the said variances, I'm sorry.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Council, any more discussion with this? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That preliminary plat is approved. Next, we'll move into item number 13, which is a public hearing, and it's also an SUP there. Scott, could you give us a staff report on that item, please?
Thank you, Mayor. What we have is a request to issue a specific use permit for a minor auto, a major auto repair facility on a piece of property that's located at southwest corner of Pirate Drive and Southwest Parkway. This property was annexed somewhere around 2006, 2007, I believe. What we have is a request to allow for the major auto repair facility to remain... So, what we have is an existing facility. One of the questions that came up in this morning's meeting was any kind of storage outside. This is an alley toward the back, out the lane. We reached out to the property owner, and she said that truck has since been moved since Mr. Atterbury purchased the property, and the employees use it for parking. And going back over here, you can see a lot of the employees in those businesses do use the alley for parking. The applicant may be here to go into a little more detail. So, the property itself is already zoned heavy commercial. There have been no known code violations since the operation of this business was originally authorized in 2016. Your planning and zoning commission recommends approval of this SUP with the following conditions: that the permit shall be good for three years based on no incidents in its past performance, shall not be used for any storage of wrecked vehicles or dismantling of vehicles or storage of vehicle parts, and that all vehicles being stored for repair shall be screened for all public rights away or shall be located inside the building. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Item number 13. If not, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any more discussion or any more questions for Scott on this item? Thank you, City Manager, for getting that truck moved for us. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the SUP with the said conditions.
Slow move.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Parsons. Council, any more discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Thank you, Scott. Our next item is item number 14, a two-part, A and a B. First part here is to discuss Granberry Resort Conference Center bookings. The first part, A, is any double bookings at the conference center over the last two years. This was put on the agenda by Councilman Tony Allen, so I'm going to call upon Mr. Allen to give us a little background on that, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. What it is, I've been getting emails and calls and taxes and all that fancy stuff, saying, is this the first time it ever happened? Nope. Not the first time it ever happened. Probably not going to be the last time it ever happened. But you don't read any of that in the paper, do you? So, I'd like for our City Manager to explain these three bookings that they got, they found for us. And what did it cost us to settle with them?
Are you prepared for that, Mr. Kaufman? Hoping you're all right?
I've got some staff here that can help me. Are these the three that you wanted?
Yeah, you're welcome to bring staff up if you want to.
Okay. Are you ready for me to address these? Okay. Wasn't sure how this agenda item was going to flow, so what we did is staff has combed through the books for the last two years and looked for anything that looked like it was booked with multiple events at the same conference center. As y'all all know, it's a multi-function facility, and it's not uncommon to have multiple events going on simultaneously. Contract even stipulates that the common areas are not to be used exclusively for an event, like the hallways and the restrooms. And so, it's not uncommon, in fact, it's desirable to have as many functions to fill up that place as we can every day.
That's not what I asked for.
Well, I'm just giving you some history of what we did to get to where we're at. And so, we're trying to, since you didn't give me any names of events, I'd love...
Well, Shirley Hooks was one. I didn't see that.
Well, that wasn't the conference center.
The City Manager was one. Y'all's event you're involved in.
I'll get to that. I was going to hit this Miss Butler one first from Luling, Texas, Texas Blackboard User Group. And if I could, I'll just call on Christie to explain that event to us and what we did to accommodate those folks.
Which event are we talking about?
This is, this is the one, the Texas Blackboard User Group.
Okay. In the files that I was able to pull, the TBUG event, Texas Blackboard Users Group, TBUG for short, was in attendance in November, November 11 through 13...
Pull the microphone down a little bit.
...of 2015. So, just being able to research the files, it wasn't while I was in attendance or employed. But by speaking with some former staff, we were able to see that there was another event that was booked at that time. And let me get you the copies of this. And these were all in your agenda packets. It was a group, it was a Christmas market of 2015 that the Christian Women's Job Corps had booked at the space, also on that same date of November 13 through 14 of 2005, per one of our former staff, that then the TBUG group was booked on top of this, and it was requested that the Christmas market moved to another weekend. After speaking with the Christmas market group, they did not want to move because they had advertised for their Christmas market, and the TBUG group, we were able to accommodate them by different rooms in the facility, upstairs, and also different rooms at the Hilton Garden Inn. The room charges, it looked like the Lake Granberry Ballroom for when they were in attendance was waived, per an email from our former operations manager to...
How much money was that, was waived, you said?
It would have been, on one day, $1,000 for the room rental. And then, they received a discount for their room charge while they were in attendance of $550 for the additional rooms that were being used for the three days. Based on their room nights, that charge, it does not look like there was enough room nights for that type of a discount, based on 69 room nights.
And how many people showed for that?
I'm looking through the file information on how many were in attendance. It looks like there was over 100 in the attendance, but I do not have an exact number of attendees.
You don't have the number?
Not in the paperwork that I have, no, sir.
Okay. And you said it was $1,000 and something else that we gave them?
$1,000 in a room for Lake Granberry Ballroom for one of the, one of the days that they were in attendance. And in the contract, Comanche Peak Boardroom 1, 2, and 3, and the Brazes and the Comanche, for a total of their three days, their additional rental was $550.
Okay, how about the other two?
Let me just...
Can you tell me which other two that we're talking about?
The one we're talking about is one, it's General Manager's meeting.
The governmental TML thing.
Okay.
I would like to say that on that last one, we actually billed and collected $9,415 for them using the facility with all the other goods and supplies and things that they did pay for.
How much you say?
Says here, $9,415.
Okay. I'm looking a different one. I've got 9,504.
It's 9,504, whatever. It's still over, it's 95, what I've got here, less the deposit, was 9504. 9,504. So, anyway, this is a, this is a good example of multiple use of that facility, and this happened in 2015.
Since you've been here, Chris, when she's looking it up.
I will tell you that the conference that we held in February, we had Tarleton State and this governmental association gathering at the same facility. However, the lady that's in charge of that contacted me, because I'm on the professional development committee that planned that event, and told me, what's going on? The thing's overbooked, we can't be there. And I said, well, let me find out. And so, found out what it was, was the first floor was all overbooked, and we just simply agreed to move it upstairs, and everything was good to go. Subsequently, though, Tarleton backed out and didn't want to have anything to do with our facility at that time. And so, we...
Why did they back out?
It was a staff relation problem. And the double booking, and they sent an email, and it's in your packet there, and it tells all about it. I don't think we need to go into the negative stuff. But bottom line is, they weren't happy customers, and so, we refunded them all of their money back. But that happened well before the date of the event. So, that happened back in the previous year. This was in January of this year, so fall of last year is when we had that, in October of last year, where we agreed to move the conference upstairs and leave Tarleton downstairs. However, they didn't want to do that because of previous history. They had noise upstairs going on that interfered with their professional, what they considered a professional environment. They also had some problems with our staff, and so, they backed out.
How much did we refund them?
Their deposit.
Oh, that's it?
Uh-huh.
Since you've been back, Chris, what do you think, or since you've been here, just a ballpark figure, how much you think we paid out on, on double bookings?
Well, not much. I had a hard time finding any. You know, we put all that we could in this packet for you. Christie, would you like to elaborate on any other double bookings that we discovered?
On the Texas, on the government association group, the items that they, and this is an estimate, with the items that they received complimentary, which is in the file, and we were very transparent. The audiovisual, they received two continental breakfasts, one afternoon break, a bar setup, and an open bar. And with the estimate of what our pricing is, that, as I pulled those numbers together, it would have been $4,478.
That's what we paid out?
That they received complimentary.
What do you mean?
That was what they, that's the value, what they received for free.
$4,000 free?
Roughly.
And did we give away free alcohol?
It appears that we did. It is in the file that...
You know that's illegal? You know that's illegal?
Yes, sir.
We could lose our license.
I do know that, sir.
That ain't good. Well, I know whenever we brought the Hot Rod Association, the ONC cars in, that was another one that was, that a local realtor had a, uh, the park, which probably rents for how much, $250, $300, was the park rent?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five dollars, but we wound up giving her the...
Conference Center.
So, we know that's another two or three thousand.
Yeah.
Folks, thank y'all for staying, it's funny how some things get put in the paper and some things don't, you know? Ms. Myers, I am sorry that you and your families got to go through this, I, I tell ya, uh, I got two sons, and I asked my wife, I said, "Why is Rose so upset?" And she said, "Well," said, "Our first son said, uh, we gave him 15,000 and they went to Hawaii for two weeks." Our second son, we gave him 15, he got married in a barn, and with a cowboy hat on, and, but a girl, you wanna go the extra step, the extra mile, and I'm sorry that this had to happen. When they didn't do the background check to see what was going on, all they had to do was say, "We're in bed, this thing's been on the council twice, folks, one time in the back room, now today. This is not right by no means or measure. This is all politics." And I tell ya, if I gotta stoop that low to get re-elected, I don't want either one of y'all to vote for me.
Councilman Allen, we're on, we're on the agenda item, okay, we're still on the agenda item, thank you, thank you.
It's all funny, his name's never in the paper with anything going on, is it? I'll pass the plate.
Are we, are we done talking about the double book, I have one que, I have one question for Christie?
Yes, sir.
Christie, uh, when you talk about double bookings, uh, I know we have a large conference room, we have the capability probably booking, what, three or four events in there if they're small enough or whatever, I guess?
Sir.
Has there been times when we booked an event in there, and then somebody found out that, uh, "Oh, there's another event going on upstairs, I don't want to, I, I don't want to, uh, you know, have that going on, and so I'm just gonna back out"? Have you ever had people say, "Well, I don't wanna," not that it was double booked, their event, but they, they found out there's gonna be other people in there, it's kinda like a, a B and B, you know, they, they book a room, and then they find out there's other people in there that's gonna be, maybe have kids or something, be noisy, so hey, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna turn my, I'm gonna, uh, uh, ask to, you know, not to be in there or something, you know?
No, sir, not in my experience, um, in the time that I've been there that that has happened, no.
Okay, good, 'cause I know we've talked a little bit about people being upset over other people being in there, but I don't consider that double booking, I consider that booking all the, the, the space available, and I'd like to do that a lot out there, so...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Councilperson Myers?
I'd like to ask Christie if any of your clients have ever known in advance that they were going to be double booked, and they agreed to it, right, they're good with that?
Yes.
But what you're, what you've just shared with us is when clients find out that they're double booked and they're not aware of that, that they're not happy about it.
And that should not happen.
And so, that's the point here, that's what we've said all along, is that this is about our professional, ethical, transparent way that we run our conference center, in an efficient way, it's not to point fingers at anybody, even though it puts people like myself in an unfortunate situation, and there's nothing wrong with double booking when the clients know that they have to, that they have to motor around each other, and in our case, I'll just say flat out, we were fine with the West Texas Press Association coming in with us after multiple times of finding out, yes, they're coming, no, they're not, yes, they're coming, no, they're not, yes, they're coming, no, they're not, no, they're not. But I think this is where we're at, is if we can't put a price on how many people walk away from that conference center because we're not providing them this type of service, and I think at this point, to try to heal this community and heal this council, I've never been afraid to step up and say, "We need to do better. This isn't about me, this isn't about politics, this wasn't about pointing fingers, I know the city manager was in a difficult situation, but we could've just been open and honest about it, including myself." So, I know I'm not gonna be able to speak later, but I think that right now, we're looking at the conference center, we're looking about how the conference center should run efficiently, I think that as long as everybody understands their contracts, which I understand the pricing very well, although the Hood County News obviously doesn't agree with that, but when I look at the documents that were sent in the council book, and I see that groups are getting 100% of the council, or the conference center for free, when they only have 92 room nights in a documented file, that doesn't pass the smell test to me either, because it says there was a hundred, which it takes 101 plus people, am I right to get the conference center for free?
That is correct, 101 room nights.
And that's not what's on one of the events that happened this year, and also, the Hilton reported only 92 room nights were booked. We need to, anybody could come in and say, "I'm gonna book a hundred rooms, or 101 rooms and get that place for free." We have no follow-up...
We do.
To see...
Okay, council, listen, on the agenda, we have double booking, and if there's any, if there's something that we need to do and put something in place for double bookings and a process, and I think we do have a something in place, then that's what we wanna talk about now, at a later agenda date, if we need to...
That's what I'm getting at, Mayor, let me finish, please.
But if we need to do something on the conference center, as far as what we're doing, what you're talking about now, that will have to be on another agenda item.
No, we're talking about double bookings and triple bookings.
Okay, make sure that's what we're talking about.
And that, and pricing and all that, and so with that being said, I'm just saying, booking events should be a top priority for the GRCC. That said, these bookings require efficiency, where every customer, whether independent or shared, needs consistent information regarding the GRCC policy and operations. Furthermore, every paying customer needs to understand their contract and the contents that align with their specific needs. The history of these double bookings, triple bookings is clearly evident, and also shows a lack of consistency in our GRCC policy. The result of all of these unfortunate events are angry customers that say they're never coming back, example Tarleton, loss of revenue that we can't even put a dollar price on, cost to the taxpayers who are paying for all of this, and a poor reputation reflected on our community and our conference center. And since we're already evaluating that, I would like to make a recommendation tonight that these concerns be addressed to ensure the city delivers all the expectations of our customers, our taxpayers, and that a clear policy is in place when events like this transpire. The GRCC is a $9 million facility that these taxpayers pay for, and I am fine with standing up here and saying we need an, we need a professional operation that is experienced and organized. And with that, I want to make a motion that the city manager work with the city council to create a policy and a procedures manual that addresses all the issues that we've talked about tonight, and implement a real-time commuter, computerized and efficient booking system.
Thank you.
I would like to add that we do have an up-to-date, computerized booking system, and it is being utilized at this time. I don't know what you experienced over a year ago, but I can tell you that now, follow-up is occurring, um, communications occurring with our clients, they understand what's going on, we're not giving them a room discount till they validate how many rooms they booked and have, for the event, and we give that at the end of the contract, so we'd be happy to work with you to put all that, articulate that into the existing policy if you desire.
Thank you, Chris. Councilman Couch?
Christie, um, so you're aware that this isn't just a one-off situation, this has happened more frequently than it should've happened, and to make the customers happy, we give concessions, uh, so that they're happy and regardless of the circumstances, that's customer service, right?
That is correct.
Okay, so, what would your, if you could have anything, um, to prevent that, what would that be?
Well, that's real clear communication, um, at the time of booking, um, you know, letting them know what's going on in the facility, um, at the same time, the same, same as, you know, it is multiple events going on, or could be, and, and that's what we want, but being able to have that communication and that not, um, even on the, the first booking or the second booking, you know, in the facility, as long as they're not a conflict with parking and in the same space, they need to have clear communication that there's other events going on in the building at the same time.
So, can somebody, uh, go to, go to your website and look at the available dates for various rooms that are available with the pricing of them?
No, sir, because we do not have a website.
We still do not have a website on a $9 million asset.
There's a website listed on the Visit Granberry that was our website, and people access it there, but we are in the process with this new budget, putting that together for you.
Okay, well, I think that's...
That's our priority.
Well, I think that's what Councilperson Myers is asking for then, and so, we need to continue to work on that and add a later date, is that what you're saying, Councilperson?
Yes, sir, yes, Mayor, please.
Add a later date, let's bring this to the council and let us look at it.
Well, hopefully, we can turn this unfortunate situation into something that benefits everybody.
Thank you, Councilman Couch.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
I think most people would agree this is an unfortunate situation. You made the comment that at the time of the booking, you think that the customer should be aware of a double booking, is that correct?
That is correct, they should be aware of what's going on in the building at the same time.
And yet, the elephant in the room that nobody's speaking directly to is, is the fact, is, is a specific event involving one of the folks at this diocese?
Yes.
I know you've done extensive research through all this, looking for double bookings, looking for communique's between parties, and all of those things, the fact that, the fact that a party realizes six months after the booking that it's double booked and there may be an issue, does that seem fair in this situation?
Let me repeat your question, you wanna know if it's fair if they find out six months later?
Right.
That would not be fair.
That would not be fair.
No.
In your research, did you find out through communicate, whether it's text messages, emails, those kind of things, do you think it's possible that they found out six months after the fact that that was the case, that there was a double booking?
In the emails that I was able to locate in the file, um, and email communication, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, um, they were aware of a group in the facility, the West Texas Press Group, is, is that what you're asking me?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm asking, 'cause we're denying the fact that we were aware of it, and then we've become aware of it, and then we had somebody leave, and then we, then we questioned the ability of the staff to handle the wedding.
No, sir, Councilman Mobley, that is false, we...
Okay, on the double book, on the double booking, folks, we've got a motion, and we have a second, and we've had some discussions, so the state...
Mayor, Mayor.
Call the question.
Second.
You got a second? Okay, council, we need to go ahead and vote on the, uh, the motion to have the city manager put together a, a plan or a program and, uh, present it to the council. That motion was made by Councilperson Myers and seconded by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion, well, no more discussion, all in favor of that, let's take a record vote, Councilperson Parsons, how do you vote? Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Absolutely aye.
Okay, Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilman Mobley?
Aye.
And Councilman Myers?
Aye.
That is approved, so now we're gonna stick, go down to B, which is to consider ratifying the city management settlement of the claim related to the triple booking of the Neil Wood Wedding that occurred on July 22nd, 2017, put on the agenda by Councilman Mobley. Now, since this does involve one of our council members, Councilperson Myers, you have the right to, uh, sustain from this, or you can stay up here. You do realize that it's, that you have a conflict with this?
I was told I needed to leave, so I'll leave.
Let me confer with the attorney here. Okay, so, the attorney's saying that it's up to you whether or not you, you have a conflict with it or not, Councilman Myers?
I'll stay.
Folks, this is not a show, okay, let's refrain from all the clapping, refrain from the clapping, respect the council up here, okay, please. So now, we'll go into that, with the consider ratifying the city management settlement, and I can say, Councilperson Mobley put this on the agenda, so I'm gonna let Councilman Mobley start it off.
I would like to start by hoping, with expressing the hope that this council would extend the same courtesy that I've extended to them tonight. The folks out here and the folks that are watching on TV have seen a theme tonight, and that is, when I start talking, we call for the question, 'cause we wanna get this over with. Now, I'm not gonna do a 45-minute dissertation here, what I'd like to do is do a timeline of what's happened here and the incredible pressure that our city manager's been under for almost his entire term as our city manager, and it was, as was expressed earlier, he's one of the better things that have happened to this city in quite a while. He's a man that, that stands up for what he believes, he knows the rules, and he's not afraid to look you in the eyes when he says it. This started off as an inquiry, yes, we talked about it in an executive session, and the only thing I asked there was that when the settlement or when the concessions were made, that we were made aware of that. That never happened. As a city councilperson, one of our duties is to be good stewards of the money of the taxpayer. That's all we're doing here, folks, I've been called, it's been called dirty politics, I've had people express concern for my soul tonight, which I greatly appreciate. I'm glad folks are here to see the process and how the city works. I've been accused of dirty, dirty politics, trying to destroy a young couple. By the way, I'd ne, I don't, to my, to my knowledge, I've never laid eyes on either one of this couple before tonight, trying to sabotage a wedding. I apologize to city staff, because over the last three or four weeks, they've been inundated with open records requests on me concerning anything from text messages, emails, to my billing and payments to the city. We're supposed to be good stewards of the taxpayer's dollar, and that's why we're here, that's the cold, hard fact, and I'm gonna seem like an ogre when this is all over to some of you, and I hope to remedy that after tonight. You know, I equate this to the person that's driving 100 miles an hour down 377, they get pulled over by a police officer, and instead of signing the citation and going home, they berate our police officer and ask him to go catch real criminals. What I'm looking at is potential official misconduct and abuse of power. What I'm looking at is potential official misconduct and abuse of power. I like the fact that Dave Eagle mentioned transparency, because that's what I ran on the first time and the second time. And no, I'm not bitter that Ms. Myers beat me four years ago, because I went to work the next day, and my life continued, and now I'm here. The abuse of power is the act of using one's position of power in an abusive way.
Mayor, I thought we were going to talk about reimbursement.
They're on the agenda, item, Mayor, Councilman Mobley. That is the claim and the settlement.
Yeah, we stay with what's on the agenda.
That's what's on the agenda.
We talked about double bookings, we talked about triple bookings, we're a multiple-event venue up here.
We're talking about item B, which is a settlement.
Yep.
Right.
We're talking about this, I'm getting, I'm on the settlement, it's a severely mishandled event. Mr. Kaufman, in your opinion, how is this a severely mishandled event? Or do you think this is a mishandled event?
I obviously think it was a mishandled event.
Then explain that comment.
I'm trying to parse it properly. I think that there's just been a general level of distrust organizational-wise with the customers, and something happened back in December, as proven by these emails and things, that illustrated that the client was aware of another booking in the event and that, and that there was not an expectation of sole use of that facility. However, it wasn't documented on the contract, it wasn't clearly articulated in any of the paperwork that our staff had put together as to what exactly was going to be provided and what the prices were for and what those prices represented. And so, but the facts of the emails show communication that illustrate a strong position that the facility was going to be rented for 12-hour period for $1,200, less a discount for hotel rooms of 25%. And, and, you know, that's, I don't know where those numbers come from, so they don't line up with any of our internal rate structure that's been adopted by this council. So I think that there's just been a, from the very start, this whole arrangement was inappropriate, unfortunate and inappropriate.
So we didn't even, we didn't even pull numbers from our own pricing schedule?
It appears not.
May I speak?
Councilperson Myers.
If you, if you look at the communications that are in the council book, the wedding was only supposed to be in five and six, not the entire ballroom. Every communication that came from the general manager at the time said we had just five and six, and that our access would begin at 12 noon on Saturday, six hours before the wedding began. We were all in agreement that that was okay. If you look in every communication regarding the discussions back and forth of whether or not that was okay, not one communication before June 4th or 5th from Christie Creeling said, "Oh, by the way, there's another one upstairs." Not one. In every communication where they were talking about bringing in the West Texas Press Association and negotiating where they were going to put our wedding in five and six, which is $1,200, then not one time did Ms. Creeling ever say, "Oh, and make sure you tell them that on September 16 of 16," or, of 16, in September of, four months before we even came in to book a wedding, I have already got a signed contract for a family reunion on that same date until June of this year, 47 or 44 days before the wedding. Never in that communication was there a, "Oh, and by the way, there's actually three." So that is how this situation ended up the way it was. There is no freebie price deals. I'm very aware of the pricing. I made sure with you, Mr. Kaufman, that I was not getting any preferential treatment. What's a shame is someone who loves a city, who wanted to have a beautiful wedding in that conference center and serves, can't. That's all I'm saying. I don't know why you don't understand the pricing. The communication says we're going to get five and six, we're getting it at 12 noon, and that was the deal. We were way okay with it.
On the contract, it says the grand ballroom.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the communications that say we're getting five and six, and that's what we booked when we, when five adults spoke to the general manager.
That's fine. I'm not, I'm not arguing with you, Rose, at all, I'm not.
So let's go back to the ratification that the city manager, on the settlement, we've talked, we've talked about what happened, how it happened, but right now, Mr. Mobley has on here the settlement, the settlement that was made.
Excuse me, Mr. Allen.
You didn't call him down there. He's sitting there interrupting her.
But right now, Mr. Mobley, you need to finish up on what this, you want to talk about on the city manager's settlement to the claim related to this incident. And I think we're talking about what was the settlement.
I think I've stayed on point here. Okay, we have a contract that says Land, Lake Granbury Ballroom, we have a pricing schedule that says $1,500 if 26 rooms or more are booked, we have a councilperson that was quoted $900 with all the ancillary-
No, sir. There is a pricing sheet in your council book that clearly shows they were going to charge us for ancillary. I don't know why it wasn't on the contract, but it is in here, and every price for tablecloths, napkins is on that sheet that, that the bride signed. It's, it's in your book.
Okay, guys, let's, let's stay in, parliamentary procedures here. Be recognized to speak, don't jump in there whenever you feel like speaking, okay? Councilman Couch?
I'd like a little clarification. So is this basically to approve what, what the city manager did in relation to the wood wedding, to make it clean and tidy, or what is the ratification about?
Councilman Mobley, can you answer that?
I would like for everybody to know the specifics behind this before we ratify something, because-
You should know them, then.
Well, I do.
Councilperson Myers, please, please ask to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, because this is, this is a little more than frustrating. But unlike some folks, I would like to know what I'm voting on before I vote, and I would like the folks out here to know what we're voting on before we vote.
I'm good with that.
Are we clear? Okay.
Yes, sir.
I refuse to start again, but I'll continue.
Go ahead, continue, Mr.-
Lake Granbury Ballroom was on the contract. We clearly have a, a rate schedule that says $1,500. We have a councilperson that was quoted $900. The contract and the, and the policies that said councilperson was on a committee to create state that any time between 0 and 90 days of the event, you forfeit 100% of your down payment or your deposit. The deposit on a normal situation, Christie, correct me if I'm wrong, is 50% of the quoted price, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll do the math for you here. $900 is the quoted price, and 250 never equals 50% of that amount. That's my point. Christie, can I, can I get you to come up to the podium, please? So you did all the research on the previous, the previous concessions, and you came up with about $6,000 over the last two years of everything combined, is that close?
That's approximate, yes.
No, no, it's about nine.
Councilman Allen. Go ahead, Councilman Mobley.
And yet, for this one event, who, we were going to get $900, we wrote checks in, with labor, in items that totaled almost $5,000. When everything was done, with delivery, pickup, the items that were loaned, which, is that, is that common practice that we loan out these items for use at other facilities?
No.
No, sir, I've been instructed not to do that.
And we wrote a $3,000 check to a private venue so they could relocate. Has this ever happened in this town, to the best of your knowledge, Mr. Kaufman?
No.
That's my whole point here, folks. This is not a witch hunt, this is not politics, this is stewardship of funds, and that's why we're here. It's not because I like or dislike this person to my left, that has nothing to do with it, has everything to do with knowing the policies, knowing the contracts, knowing what's in them before we sign them, and don't argue with them after the fact. That's why we're here. So, yes, I wanted this item to be here, because I would like everybody, Mr. Eagle, to see what's going on here. So, yes, my item does talk about ratifying this, but I'd like everybody to know what we're ratifying before we do it.
So your issue is with Mr. Kaufman and not with Rose? Councilperson Parsons? Your issue is with the city manager and his benevolence.
We can flavor this however we want.
Well, that's what you said.
Then, okay, then, then I'm going to answer it. Okay? Mr. Kaufman was put in a position a couple of years ago with said employee that he could not, if she goes, he goes. Under that matrix, he cannot function as a city manager. That's the fact. This was confirmed in the back room, and it was admitted. When you put somebody in that box, they cannot function. Then we have an employee that can operate as they please with no repercussions. That's how we got where we are.
Mr. Mayor, that is not on the agenda.
Councilperson Parsons, right.
For that, I do not want this city to fall into again. That's where we are.
Mr. Mobley, I mean, I'm sorry, Mayor-
Councilman Allen.
You know, I asked for open records from the same department that you got all yours from, Mr. Mobley, and I got three little pages. I didn't have a staff sitting there handing me stuff like you did you. I didn't have a city manager here asking questions, knowing what was going to be asked to answer those questions. But, you know, a lot of politics is being played up here tonight.
Oh, I agree, 100%.
And I tell you, what do you want to do, Mr. Mobley? You want to pay the bill or don't pay the bill?
This is up to the council. I mean, Mr. Mobley has brought his attention to why he put this ratification on here and the events that built up to this, and we've talked to the county, the city manager, and so the council's going to look at what we did in this case and whether or not we think it is something that you want to do with taxpayers' money.
So we're going to carry it on and on and on?
No, we're not going to carry it on and on.
We're going to do it tonight?
Go ahead, Chris.
I contend that we had a very difficult claim to deal with, whether it went litigious or not, it was a very difficult situation. You've got a young lady and a young man trying to get married, and life is tough enough without this. And in their circumstance, life is tough enough because of medicine. And so I took into consideration the special needs of that client, weighed against the inadequacies of my staff that provided a service, and I was very upset about that, that we had done this to a couple. I also understood that one of my supervisors was a direct recipient of this bad treatment. However, at the time, they didn't understand what I knew about the lack of communication, apparent, the things that, that didn't seem to line up internally. I felt like the right thing to do was to facilitate whatever it took to get this young couple married in a venue, they didn't want to be at our venue, they didn't have trust in us, we had lost that trust, deservingly so, and I wanted to make it right. And I guarantee you that if one of you other folks had the similar situation with a similar person fighting for life, trying to celebrate something precious, I think, excuse me, I get a little emotional, I think that you would too do whatever it took to remedy the situation, and, and that's what I did. Now then. I don't, I don't want applause, I want to move on, I want to, I want, I, sure, there's all kinds of, like I said in the, in the newspaper article, I'm not into the politics side of this. I was looking at it from an administrator's point, risk management 101 says, keep it out of court if you can, keep the people happy if you can, try to restore a relationship that's been damaged. And, yeah, we spent about $5,000 in, in hard cash, $3,000, and the rest in soft money that was, you know, loaned items, time for the Parks Department to deliver and pick up the loaned items, and, and a little bit of staff time. I have spent more time and more effort justifying this decision than you can count in $100,000 worth of resources. Internally, my staff has had to look for things, not only for different council members, I'm not zeroing in on one or another, all council members that have asked for those records. It takes time, it takes resources, it takes your mind off of what you're supposed to be doing to focus on the distraction. On top of that, I, I, I really wrestled with releasing any information related to this claim to the newspaper until I realized it looked like we were covering something up. And as the city manager, I felt like it was my job to share the truth with the newspaper. Some people didn't believe it was the truth, I can't help that. Some people disagree with me, I can't help that. There were things that I discovered while going through the public information requests that I had no idea existed, circumstances existed. But at the end of the day, I believe that I did the right thing. And by all means, I'll write, I've said this already multiple times, I'll write the check myself, it's, it's that important to me. But I think what Mr. Mobley is, is, is trying to explain is his contempt for the process, not the result.
Yeah.
And, and there we have a difference among our council. Are we always going to get along? No. Are we always going to see eye to eye? No. But if we can all at least respect each other and move down the road, I think we will be on the right path.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
That is the story that you told me the first day that I heard about this issue, the exact story that you just told me about the heartfelt conviction, about the pain and anguish that you've, that people have been caused by our lack of ability to manage a, a conference center. And I appreciate that, but I want to make sure that people understand that in that conversation, there was nothing said about lawsuits or pressure or anything like that. It was from your heart that you felt it was fair to settle that with that individual. There wasn't any threat in, in, in your language tonight, there wasn't any indication in what you talked about tonight that you were under some undue pressure to, to, because of some potential lawsuit or because of something that happened a year ago with that employer or whatever. There wasn't any of that in that. It was strictly a heartfelt decision about how people had been hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons.
Mayor.
Councilman Couch?
You know, earlier I asked about what are we ratifying? And as I sit here and, and I hear Chris, there's nothing for me to ratify here. You did- You did the right thing. I have no issue with it. None. You did the right thing, Chris. So, do I have to affirm that again?
Counsel, any more discussion?
Mayor. I had a conversation with Chris the day after the June 6th council meeting, and I know that he is in a very difficult position. And I told him then, I trusted him, and I respect him, and I thanked him for everything he's done for this city. And I especially thank him for everything that he's done for my daughter. And I think when he and I are on a one-on-one level, he understands that I truly believe that about him. But when these political words get charged into a mother that's just trying to protect her daughter, it's difficult. When I look out in the audience and I see her, and she's fighting for life, I thank you for making that decision. And I thank the council for being supportive, and I thank the audience for being supportive. Our family meant no harm, and if anything can come from this, I would hope that someone else doesn't have to suffer the last few months like we have. My effort to protect my daughter was the only time I ever brought up the fact that I would hire an attorney to protect her, and any mother who is fearful of losing her daughter would do that. She deserved to have one good day. And in executive session, the words that you heard from our city manager were spoke, our hearts were broken. Our entire family met with him before the council meeting, and our hearts were broken, and he cried, and we cried. And after the council meeting, we went into executive session, and he spoke this same heart, and why we're here today, and why we're on certain people's Facebook pages with splattered articles that are so hurtful to this poor little girl that sat out there and wanted to thank this community tonight. But who's me? It's the most painful process that anybody should go through. And in healthcare, if I have to stand up for a patient to save their life, or if I have to stand up to a doctor to not make a mistake, then I'll do it. And it doesn't matter if I sit at the dais or not. I'm doing it for our city, and that's the right thing to do. I'm not a politician, I am a servant of this city. And I wanna thank this council, I wanna thank Chris, and I'm gonna apologize for where it's, what it's done to our council and to this community. That's all I have to say.
Mayor, I wanna say something.
Councilman Allen.
You know, our, our city is blessed by having Chris up here. One night, we had similar, same meeting, back room, we came out here and it was a police officer, the girl that does the filming, and our city secretary, I don't think there was anybody left out here. We all just about cried. Mickey made a speech, this has nothing to do with the agenda, I apologize, but Gary looked over at, at the city manager, said, "Would you pray before we leave?" It's what we all need to do. We need to pray together. You know, we're not gonna always agree with each other, but we don't have to be mad at each other. And if I offended anybody out there tonight, I wanna personally apologize. Come up to me after the meeting, I apologize to you, or anybody up here, I apologize. I only say what I think is right for our city, but I make mistakes like anybody else. And we got a good city manager, him and I may not see eye to eye on everything, but he does buy my lunch once a year.
Councilman Couch.
I would hope we will learn from this experience, that when we choose to debate our differences on the front pages of the Hood County News, this is the price we pay. We are talking about a three to four thousand dollar cost. The city manager's already told us, it's now six figures. Not to mention the emotional distress on the city manager, on this family, on this If we have a difference with a fellow council member, go to them, work it out, please.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
So, I'm confused here, I had a couple of people say that the, the lawsuit aspect of this was never brought up, and yet, Chris, please tell me you didn't make up that part.
No, I did not make that up.
Because most of the times we've talked, you said that was part of the decision process.
It, it was a risk management decision.
Which I agree, we always wanna take the cheaper, cheaper road. And yet, the councilperson involved just stated that she did make those to protect her family. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to make that clear, 'cause I'm, I'm confused by some of the things that were said, and the things that you told me that were diametrically opposed to what was stated on your behalf. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Mayor.
Councilperson Myers.
As I previously said, that I'm gonna have to say again, at the council meeting, when this all went south, the city manager said that heartfelt speech that he just said, and our family, who's sitting in the audience, accepted his offer to move forward with this wedding. Then we went into executive session, he said what happened, and everybody was good. Then, someone from the city released all of this dirty information to the Hood County News, and it ended up on the papers, and I had to protect my daughter. I think we need to clarify that when you start releasing personal documents to the paper outside of open, open records, then you start smelling dirty politics. And that is when I went to the city manager and said, "Do not release my information of my daughter anymore, or I will have to protect her via an attorney." Any mother would do that. So, when you're making statements, councilperson Mobley, make sure you say them correctly. You don't know the timeline, because you were not, I don't believe you were in that meeting with our family and the city manager? Were you?
Well, unfortunately, I haven't been able to go through the timeline because of the, the limitations-
Well, I think it's over, we don't need to do it, but were you in the meetings-
Okay, counsel, counsel.
-with, were you, were you any, in any discussions with our family and this city
manager?
I would love to go over this timeline with you-
No, I'm asking you a question, answer it.
I'm answering.
No, you're not, it's a yes or no.
I would love to go over the timeline with you and your family.
It's a simple yes or no.
Okay, counsel, this is out of hand, counsel, counsel, Councilman Mobley?
Yes, it is.
Councilman Mobley?
I'll give counsel.
Council, and I've heard both sides of this, and we've heard all the things about what we wanna, I think clearly, and I've heard Chris, but I think clearly that we work under policies, folks. And counsel, I, I understand what Chris did. There's times, and I think Mr. Parsons talked about it, and Mr. Allen too, that I would love to go out there, I got citizens all the time that come up to me and want this or that, and I say, "I can't do that, 'cause there's a policy. There's a policy we have to follow." And there obviously is something broken here that required Chris to do this, I mean, he did what he thought was right, but maybe there needs to be a third party when you get ready to do something like this, or somebody else that also approves this than putting the burden just on our city manager to make that decision and go do that. Because then it sets a precedent, it sets something to the fact that somebody will say, "Well, I, uh, I seen where you did this for somebody, I wanna do it for me too." So, we have to be careful with that, because I face, I'm faced with it every day. Somebody did this for you, or somebody, somebody even talked about it tonight, it wasn't, that, that information was not true, because things that were done in different situations was done because we thought it was the right thing to do. Our city manager's put in that position a lot, and when the, when the, when the smoke settles, and the council has all these people asking them to do something, we come to this guy, and he has to make those decisions with his staff, and hopefully, there's a policy that he follows, that he can follow, to where he can explain that to people. I can explain it, council can explain it, but it's real easy to say, "Well, let me get to the city manager, let him make those decisions," because that's his job. And so, that's, I think, what we're seeing here, is that the ratification, or the approval, or whatever it might be, is to say, if we get in this situation again, we don't wanna be sitting up here doing this, we don't wanna put the community in this, we don't want it to hit the paper, we don't want all that. But it could happen again if we don't put a policy in place, or we don't put a practice in place for when this happens. And there may be, like I said, where two people have to ratify this, two people have to do it. Mr. Kaufman.
I would, uh, propose to you that as we develop our, uh, future policies through Charlie Zach, uh, attorney, that we, uh, include provisions where if we have a claim pertaining to a council member, that, that, uh, we, we take it to the council for ultimate vote-
I agree.
-instead of, uh, letting the city manager have that responsibility.
And, and you're exactly right, because we can put emotions in it, everybody's got emotions, I've, I've, I've had people on the streets crying to do this and that, and it's hard to walk away, but I gotta say, I gotta work with a policy, I gotta work with a procedure, and this man has to work with it every day.
I've got, I've got people wanting, uh, waiver of fees-
Every day.
-for a very worthy cause, uh, coming up, and, and, you know, I've just told them, "I've gotta look at the ordinances and, and get back with you," and, and that's the way we typically operate, is through the policies, implementing what y'all directed us to do, so.
So, I think the definition of ratification or approval is that we wanna bring it to the council's attention, that there's, needs to be something put in place. In this instance, we, we do this all the time, when we run into these things that we don't have covered with a policy, then we, we work those out. And this one has, I think, went the wrong direction in many ways, but this is, uh, something that is, looks like it needs to have some type of policy put in place. It could happen to anybody.
So, I think that motion has been made and passed, right?
Certainly.
It sure is.
Uh, in my opinion, uh, city managers and council manager form a government given a broad brush to administer the funds of the city. Uh, I don't see anything in this transaction that is counter to the budget process, that there's money in the bu- in the budget available for this, I've not seen any call for a budget adjustment on this number. I think the city manager has the authority, and use that authority appropriately in this case, and I see no reason to go through a ratification process.
Then I would like to make a motion, Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Due to the fact that our city manager was clearly under duress in, in these negotiations, I would like to consider denying the settlement of the claim related to the triple booking for the Neil Wood wedding that occurred on July 22nd, 2017.
So, your motion is to deny all of it, or just part of it?
All of it.
Why do you wanna do all of it?
Even the reimbursement to the, uh, the, uh, deposit?
If we go by the policy, we go by the contract that was signed, yes.
Mayor.
So, we have a motion? You got a second?
No, I've got a question.
The next person to speak says a second.
Okay.
After we get a second-
Where's Hood County News?
Councilman, Councilman Couch, you got a second? So, now we'll have discussion.
No, I don't have a, I don't have a-
No, no, I do have a-
I guess the second will open this up for discussion.
That's right, that's right.
All right, I'll second it just for that person.
Thank you. Open up for discussion now.
Okay, um, how do we, um, deny a claim that's already been made?
We rescind it.
So, you're gonna go collect those funds, or how are you gonna do that?
I would love for that to happen. Do I think it will happen? Not from the attitude up here, I, I think that's, it, literally impossible.
You can do that, but-
But we, but I think, under the, under the circumstances that our city manager was put in, I think it was impossible. If we're in negotiations, we're on a level playing field, there is no issue here, that clearly was not the case. So, yes, I would like to-
Call the question.
I would like to-
Call the question.
Have a call to question, you got a second? No second, continue to talk. Councilman Mobley?
Got a second.
Parson.
Been second.
Okay, we had a second, okay. So, counsel, we're gonna vote on, we got a motion and a second to, uh, to, uh, not to ratify the city manager settlement, is that what it was?
No, we've to call the question.
Deny, deny this, okay.
Call, call for the vote on the motion and the second.
Okay, we had that.
That's what the question is.
Okay.
On, on the ratification?
No.
No?
No.
Called the question.
His motion, there's a motion made in a second.
And there was a motion made.
When you call for the question, then you vote on the question.
So, no more, so no more conversation on that, we vote on the call for the question.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Call the question, vote. So, now we have a motion on the floor, and a second by counsel, on, uh, refusing the ratification of the city manager's settlement. Any, had discussion?
I gotta go and que- I gotta go and question if, if we're gonna do-
We called the question.
Sir?
We called the question, all right, we're gonna vote on this.
Oh, okay, we can, we can after that, okay.
No more discussion.
No more discussion.
Boy, I might've changed my vote.
Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
No.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
No, this family's been through enough.
Yeah. Councilman Mobley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman, Councilperson Myers?
I'm abstaining from the vote.
Okay, abstaining from the vote. So, we have three a, three noes and one yes? So, it will stand as is. No ratificate, or, not ratified. Thank you for discussion, counsel. Our next one, which is a very, very important item, is the fiscal year 2017, 2000 annual operating budget.
America, we take a five-minute break.
Let's take, Ava, we're gonna take just a five-minute break, if you don't mind, okay? Let's take a five-minute break, counsel, be back here, give me time here. Twelve after.